Good evening and welcome to the January 6, 2022 Bloomington Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission advises the City Council on development proposals, development standards, long-range planning and transportation issues. Some of the items the Planning Commission has final decision authority and others the City Council will make that decision. The Planning Commission is made up of seven volunteers that are put in by the City Council for up to three years at a time. Tonight, we have five in attendance and we have five agenda items, one of those being a public hearing and two additional being a joint study with the HRA. But before we begin tonight, let's go ahead and stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, everybody. So before we begin tonight, because again, we're in a virtual world again with COVID seeming to gain popularity in our ranks, I'm going to go ahead and ask Mr. Markagard if he would go through how the public can participate with us tonight here in the chambers.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, our first item is a public hearing and while we're open here at City Hall and people can testify here, you can also testify remotely. And the way you would do that is just call in over the phone, the number's here on the screen, it's 1-415-655-0001. And then once in, you would enter in the access code, 2467-5959-444. And we will have this number scrolling across the screen throughout the public hearing item for ease of reference.
All right, thank you, Mr. Markagard. So again, City Hall is open, but if you choose, you can also call in to render public testimony. So tonight, our first item is a high-density motor vehicle redevelopment and Mr. Johnson has a staff report.
Thank you Chair Solberg. Glenn, I don't yet have the rights to share content. There we go, okay. Thank you Glenn. Can everybody hear me okay and see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. The Chair introduced the item. It is a high-density motor vehicle sales facility and the subject address is 7851 Normandale Boulevard, United Properties is the applicant and there's multiple components. There's a comprehensive plan amendment on regiding the site from community commercial to regional commercial, a rezoning request from CS1 to C3 PD, preliminary and final development plans for the four-story 180,000 square foot facility and a plat. Just a note here for the Planning Commission members, there's no action needed on the plat. This is a type-one plat, meets and bounds just to a platted lot with no change in boundaries and per the city code, no planning commission review is required on that type of application. Here's the subject property. It's located in the northeast quadrant of the interchange of Interstate Highway 494 and State Highway 100. So it's a fairly visible site, fairly prominent site. It formerly was the Days Inn Hotel and we'll get to that background here in a minute. But you can see the hotel use on there that's since been demolished. Surrounding uses for the most part are office, kind of a collection of office and industrial uses in this area. There's some hotel and other retail oriented uses more to the east towards France. But another thing I'll say about the site is that it's a quarter mile from the freeway on-ramp or the highway on-ramp to Highway 100 at the West 77th Street Industrial Boulevard exit. In terms of the background, I mentioned it was the Days Inn Hotel. It's since been demolished. The hotel was deemed structurally unsound by the building staff and other staff members involved in its evaluation. The structure was no longer safe, so it could not continue to operate as a hotel. So since has since been demolished, the site will be redeveloped. Just a note that what preceded this application and was reviewed by the Planning Commission was a privately initiated city code amendment pursued by United Properties. The city code amendment created the new use designation that you'll be reviewing tonight, motor vehicle sales, high-density. That city code amendment was approved in November of 2021, allowing the application to proceed and we'll get into kind of the key components of that use definition. The application includes a request to re-guide the site from the community commercial to the regional commercial designation. The reason for that is that motor vehicle sales is not allowed in community commercial. You need to have the regional commercial designation to allow a use of that scale. And so it does require the regiding. Just to know, we've sent out the required notices to adjacent jurisdictions. We've gotten no comment from several of them. And so there, we have not gotten any concerns from adjacent jurisdictions on that. But with any request to amend the city's comprehensive plan, you look to the goals and guidance of the comprehensive plan and you look at the specific category being requested. Regional commercial is a category that calls for high-intensity commercial uses in close proximity to freeways and highways. The site certainly meets that criteria. So this is a good candidate for the regional commercial designation. So staff is supportive of that, of the comprehensive plan amendment in that regard. In addition to the kind of designation, and we'll talk about this with the rezoning too, but there's not explicit findings that Planning Commissioner and Council have to make with respect to these types of actions. It's more discretionary. But there's always a consideration as to public benefit specific to this development. First and chiefly, it's the intensity and the amount of floor area is the type of development that is desired by the city in this type of location. So it is a high-density development meeting kind of FAR criteria. And then in addition to that, the applicant is estimating that 40 jobs would be added with this proposed development. So as I said, staff is supportive. The discussion about the rezoning is similar in nature, so I'll move to that. The district that they're requesting to rezone the existing site, the designation is CS1. They want to move it to C3 with a planned development overlay and that relates to the preliminary and final development plans that they have submitted. But if you recall, when the privately initiated city code amendment came through, there was two districts that designated this use as a permitted use and one of those districts was the C3 Freeway Commercial Center District. So some of the criteria that you would look at with the rezoning is certainly consistency with the comp plan. Well, if the site is rezoned or is regided rather to the regional commercial, it would be consistent with the comp plan. You would look at what is the kind of the differences between the existing district and the proposed district. The CS1 district is one of our older commercial zoning districts. I think it was created in the eighties. And a side benefit would be we're trying to keep moving a lot of our parcels to some of our more modern, more recently created zoning districts that have more modern performance standards. So that is a side benefit, but in this case, the CS1 district does not have a minimum floor area ratio where our modern commercial, especially freeway commercial districts do have minimum FARs associated with them. So that is a benefit. You would not want to see the redevelopment of this site happening in a kind of a lower intensity manner, if you will, given its visibility and proximity to the freeway. So that is a benefit. And then in addition to that, you'd get into a public benefits analysis, which is same or similar to what I discussed with the comprehensive plan amendment. So staff is also supportive of the rezoning request as well. Getting into the definition of this use, if you recall, when the definition was created, there was some key standards within the definition that made this type of use eligible for this category, one of which that it be a multi-level fully enclosed structure, that it have a minimum FAR of .6, that it have a maximum amount of vehicles stored outdoors for display vehicles, if you will, excuse me, and that there be a proportional limitation on the amount of vehicle repair as far as the overall floor area of the building and that a limitation on the number of overhead doors that are related to the service activities in the building. So this development meets all of that criteria. The only thing that is just a bit fuzzy right now is the amount of outdoor display. And the reason for that is that the applicant has not yet submitted their, a parking designation plan showing where they want to have their display vehicles, because that's something still under consideration by the applicant. It's not hard and set in stone yet where they want those display vehicles to be located. So that's something that's, that they're still working towards. So they meet all the criteria, the definition. So getting to the site plan, so access is not proposed to change. If you look at the northwest corner of the site, that's the main driveway to the property there to Normandale Boulevard. And then you would head north is the direction towards the freeway. They're proposing the structure mainly in the central or central eastern portion of the site with circulation all around the building. Surface parking in the west of the building, which is the front elevation of the building. A couple of things I would note is that there are some existing shared access easements to properties that go to the north and we'll talk about them as it relates to some correspondence that we received related to this development. These are existing conditions that the design before you this evening just sought to honor the existing condition, if you will, and there is some shared parking with some of those properties via easement. So they're, the applicant and I'll, certainly they can speak for themselves, but they have been in communication with some of the owners of the different properties to the north as it pertains to kind of the future continuation of some of those easements and such. So that's something that will be an ongoing discussion with the applicant. One thing I failed to bring up at the beginning of this, I apologize Chair Solberg and Commissioners, is that the operator of the proposed facility was not disclosed in the submitted documents. They're not required to disclose that. What they did disclose is that it is a major electric vehicle manufacturer and dealer. So you can, just in terms of how that relates to the specific land use, just thought I would share that. But getting back to the site plan, just a couple notes here. As far as sidewalks go, they are providing a sidewalk connection out to the driveway to the front entrance. That is a positive thing for the development, but currently there are no public sidewalks in this area. So they are seeking a deferral of constructing public sidewalks. The city code does allow for this type of request for non-residential uses when there is no public network to connect to. And given some of the, kind of the site characteristics, there is a wetland along the southern portion of the site and kind of that large right-of-way around the curve. The construction of a public sidewalk along that portion of Normandale Boulevard is a bit challenging. So staff is supportive of the deferral at this point. The typical steps to take with supporting that would be having them enter into a petition and waiver agreement just to state that they would pay for its construction at a later date should the city pursue that. But good to know that they're still providing that connection to the main entrance, because I think the most likely sidewalk network, if there were to be one installed in this area, would be to the north up to Viking Drive, I believe. So just a couple of points about that. One other thing they are showing is a, or they are requesting rather, is PD flexibility on the setback of this northwestern stormwater pond. It's an open basin as opposed to kind of an underground chamber. And the city has front landscape yard requirements that necessitate a 20-foot setback. Rain gardens are allowed in that area, but not full-blown open ponds. So that's something of a design that's a little bit still under, under progress. And it's a little bit of a complicated issue because it does involve required separation of the XL overhead power line equipment as well as required buffering to the wetland. So we're working with their design team on trying to reach a code-compliant design and I think it might still be feasible to reach a code-compliant design. And so that's what's reflected in your conditions of approval. But we will continue to work with them on that issue. They still would have the right to request flexibility. Staff's position on it is we just want to work with them to see if a code-complying alternative is feasible before going down that path, if you will. So just a note about that. All the structure setbacks are compliant. I did not mention that, but given that this building is in the middle of the site, that's probably fairly obvious, but we'll continue on here. The building design, they're proposing a mix of materials of glass, metal panel and architectural concrete. So those materials per our code are acceptable in this particular zoning district. The structure is, as I said, it's four stories in height and it is a little over 68 feet in height, I believe. There is no limitation on structure height at this property and that applies to construction trains as well. Terms of the floor plan, I'll share the first floor plant, the first floor here. I just color-coded it just for ease of view here and the image is flipped to the left. So north is actually to the left on this image. I apologize for that, but it fits better on the slide. Just in terms of where the areas are in the first floor, there's a showroom and lounge and kind of the front portion of it. Some of the office uses are towards the front as well. The main central portion of the first floor is the repair activities and that does have to be minor repair per the definition of this use. There is some part storage area and then on the north side of the building, there is a detail and wash area where I believe the dealer cleans vehicles to present them upon new purchase or following service. I don't believe it's a full-blown car wash, but more of just a detailing area where they prepare vehicles for delivery. Getting to the second through the fourth floor, these are the vehicle storage areas. So this is for automobile inventory storage and there are areas on the, along the glass areas of the building, you will see vehicles displayed. Getting to the parking of the property, they have sufficient off-street parking in the surface parking areas to meet our parking requirements. Something that the staff will be monitoring with parking is again, that limitation on 30 outdoor display vehicles. And so it was similar to other motor vehicle sales uses that are facilities that we've done. What we desire to see is a plan showing ultimately where those display vehicles are so that the city continued to ensure compliance with that 30-vehicle limitation. So that is a condition of approval. Landscape plan, a good distribution of material around the site. They are showing a code-compliant amount of landscaping. I believe they're missing a couple parking island trees. So that's just in terms of just locating the material that they have. And then they would need to bump up their western elevation foundation plantings level to meet the city's supplemental landscaping policy. So that was reflected in the staff report. And then just a note that any landscape material, there's not a ton of it, but any material that's in close proximity or within that XXL power line easement does need to meet XL's approval in terms of the type of material. XL typically does not want to see over-story trees that can conflict with their overhead power equipment. So just a couple notes there. Here's the plat. Again, this is just for reference. We will be recommending the, all the typical conditions of approval that are associated with a plat, you know, parkland dedication, easements, all those types of things. But being a type-one plat, again, it's a meets and bounds property, just going to a platted lot with no change in lot configuration or boundaries. I just wanted to show you this for reference. It does need to be plotted because in order to be issued a building permit, you do have to be a platted lot in Bloomington. You'll remember this from our review of the Walzer Toyota Development. The motor vehicle sales facilities do have operational performance standards that they have to follow. That's no different for these high-density facilities and those standards do include noise, vehicle repair activities, storage and display, test driving locations and loading and unloading, basically hours of when they can do those activities. Other miscellaneous issues, as always, they have to provide an approved lighting plan. They do need to provide trash and recycling storage accessible within the building. That's not currently shown in their floor plans. That is a change. The facility signage does have to comply with our sign ordinance and rooftop equipment does need to be screened. Getting to the public correspondence in this case, as I noted before, we have notified adjacent jurisdictions. They do have some time yet to respond to that, but we have not gotten any concerns, all no comments basically on the adjacent jurisdiction. MINDOT did provide a comment letter. Within the letter, it was more just some clarifications pertaining to their future projects. My understanding is that the design engineer has been working with MINDOT staff to confirm that their future project in this area will not conflict with this development. And just to note that any work within MINDOT right-of-way, of course, requires MINDOT right-of-way permitting or approval processes. And then yesterday I sent, you all hopefully received that, but I received a letter from the adjoining property owner to the north, 5241 Viking Drive. So as I mentioned before, there are some access easements that are, and not only access, but utility as well, kind of in this area. And a concern of the owner of 5241 is that that access easement continue with this new development. It's my understanding that they have been working with United, or United Properties has reached out to them and is working with them and United Properties, again, let them speak for themselves, but is working to extinguish the access aspect of the easement. And the city has no concern or is not, you know, does not require that that access easement continue because there is adequate circulation around the building. So it's not a concern to extinguish that aspect. There is sanitary sewer in the area. And so the, there does need to be, the city does need to maintain the ability to maintain that infrastructure and the dealership also has to maintain that infrastructure and that the owner is, to the north, is cognizant of that. And their follow-up email stating that they would not object is cognizant of the fact that the utility easement does need to continue. They're just concerned about vehicles driving back and forth across their property. So I think that issue is on its way to being resolved, but certainly those owners can speak to the, their thoughts on it as well. So with that, staff is recommending approval of this application. I have three motions for you and just a reminder again, that no motion is necessary for the plat. So I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson, for the staff report. Just go ahead and open it up here to Commission members first to see if they have any questions for Mr. Johnson. And I would like to note that Commissioner Roman did join us at the very beginning of the presentation. So we have six members here tonight. So, and Glenn, I can't, you moved the window, so I'm not sure if anybody. Commissioner Cookton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Johnson, a question about the C3 zoning district. I believe that has a maximum floor area ratio of 1.0. Do you know why that is?
Yes, thank you for that question, Chair. Commissioner Cookton, thank you for that question because I failed to include that as part of the PD flexibility request. So thank you for that reminder. They are requesting a modest increase in floor area, which would exceed 1.0 floor area ratio. It's literally equates to 5,000 square feet of floor area in order to just have a uniform building footprint for the full four stories. But I don't know why there's a maximum, I don't know why the cap is at 1.0 FAR. Glenn might have a better idea why that limitation was set for that district. Glenn, do you have any insight or could add anything?
Mr. Markagard?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cookton, we would have to review that and get back to you.
I figured you were going to say something like, because the Planning Commission told us, that's what it should be.
Well, Chair, I think that's the first time Mr. Markagard has been stumped, so I'll wear that as a badge of honor. No, no need to get back to me, but I am curious. I'm not huge on restricting development. You know, maybe this, maybe United Properties wanted five stories and we didn't allow it. So we should always be looking at these things critically. I'm sure there's a good reason why it's 1.0, but always good to be thinking critically about what's on the books. So I'll leave it at that.
All right. Any other Commissioners? Otherwise, go ahead and think about that. But Mr. Johnson, I have a couple of questions for you. And I understand, well, can you explain a little bit about, and I, as I was reading through the staff report, I think it was MINDOT's letter mentioned something about the weir structure or something for that wetland, which leads me to believe that that is in part a storage stormwater pond and how that fits in? And then really kind of this, the next piece of the code compliance regarding the 10-foot front yard for the facility on this map. It's hard for me to understand with as many lines as there is and bad as my eyes might be, where they're sitting now and what that might mean if we don't, if we weren't to grant some flexibility and they couldn't meet that setback based on your, the engineering that has to take place around the, the power lines and such.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Can you hear me?
We sure can.
Can you see the site plan on the screen still?
Yes.
So if you see this dashed line, I'll kind of draw, annotate where that's running.
Yep.
That's the easement line and that's a 10-foot setback from the property line.
Okay.
And you can see that the edge of the pond encroaches it just barely into that easement area. So the plan actually shows it at an eight-foot setback. And in their written materials, they recognize or acknowledge that they have to meet a 10 because engineering won't allow them to encroach into the drainage and utility easement. So just a note about that.
So that, that itself is a deviation for the 10 feet instead of, as I read, 20 feet?
Yeah. And that has to do with historically how the city, what we allow and don't allow in landscape yards, for example. We allow sidewalks to be in landscape yards. We allow rain gardens, but we don't allow full-blown stormwater ponds. And the reason for that being is that if they were right up against a sidewalk, it could present as like a safety hazard. If, you know, if someone were to bike or to trip into one of those facilities, you know, it's just a possible issue. So that's why the city hasn't historically allowed that. Now, this area, there's less, there's less possibility, your likelihood of some pedestrians or some people walking right next to it. So that might provide some justification to look at it, but it's, it's kind of the standard operating procedure on staff's part to look to code-complying alternatives. So that would involve a 20-foot setback. So what that would mean is kind of carving the edge of that pond back another 10 feet and the trade-off, if you will, and again, this is still being investigated by United's design team. Tom Lincoln is the engineer of record with Kim Lee. Tom Lincoln is the engineer of record with Kimley Horn, but they're looking at, you know, possibly expanding the pond in this area that I'm annotating to kind of make up that difference. But again, that calls into question proximity to the overhead electrical structure as well as the, the wetland has required to have minimum and average buffering. So it's kind of a puzzle right now, and they're trying to see if they can get a code complying stormwater pond to fit into that puzzle. If they can, great. If they can't, then I think that they would have, on the basis of all those factors, would probably have a reasonable argument to support flexibility. It's just we're working with them to see if a code complying alternative is available yet.
So just to clarify, in the motion tonight, we're, we're granting some flexibility to that. But it really, I think what I'm trying to understand is if they can't meet that 10 feet, is that an administrative review of that or do they have to come back for another action from a planning commission?
If, yeah, thank you, Chair. If, if it was not resolved before council, it would have to be. But because this is a regiding and rezoning application, there's, there's going to be a month of time in between the planning commission action and the city council action. So I'm very confident in between your recommendation and the council recommendation, or action rather, that we're gonna, we're gonna get that design work done and figure out what is needed to happen. So right now, the approval as it's laid out to you tonight would require the 20 foot setback. It would just be like, it would just be saying meet code, basically. That's what's reflected in the landscaping condition in your packet. But if they're unable to accommodate that with all the moving pieces that are happening there, staff would go back to the drawing board with them and potentially pivot if it's, if it's unreasonable.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. The second question I have is also on that minimum landscape yard. And in the staff report, again, you say the rear proposed, the rear side or north is at zero feet. And is, and is five. And so again, in the conditions, we would recommend that it's five, but how would they adjust that then?
So without any flexibility, code allows the side and rear landscape yards to go down to zero if there's an access easement? If there's a shared access easement, it's allowed to waive the interior setback or landscape yard, if you will. So what they're contemplating is they have a code complying landscape yard in this area. They're contemplating considering maybe getting rid of that, that shared access easement here. Here is still a zero foot setback. So my assumption is that they will have to continue this. This portion in here will have to be, remain as a shared access is my guess. And then on the east side, they have a shared access easement with the Bill Mack property and that will continue. It might be revised, but it, it's going to continue as part of this development. They, they don't have enough room to, to, to forego that. So they don't need one on the east. They don't need one up in the top northwest corner, assuming they continue that. And they are showing a five foot yard along the majority of the north line.
All right. Thank you. And then just one final question. And I know we didn't get a comment from Edina, but the development just north of Viking in Edina, can you tell me what that, what that is proposed to consist of? Is that primarily commercial? Is it residential? Is mixed use?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. I would say, we actually did get a no comment from Edina. So we did get no comment from Edina, but the, the uses that they're contemplating developing up there, it's been a multi-phase process. I think Glenn even knows a little more about it than I do. But they are, they do have some residential uses in that development to the north, so north of Viking Drive, as well as I think some hotel and other commercial uses. So I think it is a mixed use, multi-phase development.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Markergard, do you have any more on that?
Sure. Mr. Chair, currently on Viking Drive, just north of this area, there's approximately 200 units of residential under construction. They do have a couple hotels that surprisingly in this market are still interested in moving forward. And then there's some restaurant uses existing already. And then, you know, more potential uses after that.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. That's all my questions. Commissioner Goldsman?
Chair Solberg, Chair Solberg, sorry to interrupt. I think Brian Hanson has more information about that weir, if you wanted to discuss that. But I think Tom Lincoln on the design team is probably actually the most knowledgeable person about it.
No, thank you. I, in part, I was just, my understanding is that it's, it's a stormwater pond. And so maybe how does that fit into the decision? But it sounds like it's treated more as a wetland at this point. And
My apologies, Commissioner Goldsman.
Yeah, we'll go to Commissioner Goldsman. I'm, I'm good with the information you gave me.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. A question for you, Mr. Johnson. As you're notating the, the plan, can you talk a little bit more about the sidewalk placements? And what sidewalks exist as well as the sidewalk that is being requested to be deferred? Just giving us an idea of, of the property as well as the surrounding locations around it of to the, I guess to the, to the east as well as to the north.
Sure. Chair, Commissioner Goldsman, again, sorry for interrupting. You were there before. Here's the main entrance to the building. So first, I'll just start with their site. They're proposing to meet code. And again, code requires connection to the public right of way to the main entrance of a building via sidewalk. So they would be providing their sidewalk connection in this yellow annotated line that I'm drawing. If you can see that. And so it basically dumps the sidewalk out right at the northwestern drive there. So they would be fulfilling that code requirement by completing that. And what I was mentioning before is that this area along, if you can see where my mouse is, along Normandale Boulevard is going to be challenging to install a sidewalk along that area on the basis of that wetland and, and just kind of issues with right of way, say, and constructability through there. I'm sure Brian Hanson could add more in that respect. But basically there is sidewalk along portions of West 78th, once you get east of Computer Avenue. And there is, I believe, I'd have to look in again at Viking Drive. I forget if there are sidewalks on Viking, but where we anticipate more sidewalk to be valuable to this property is connecting it to the north. So the reason that we are supportive or happy with where they're showing the sidewalk connection is we think that that will integrate well with whatever future sidewalk does get constructed to connect this facility to future retail or commercial development that happens along the border of Edina.
Commissioner Goldsman, is that it? Or would you like, do you have more follow up?
That, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay.
Looks like Viking. Forgive me. It looks like Viking does not have sidewalk in a continuous stretch.
That's my understanding as well. Commissioner Roman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Johnson, back on the topic of the wetland. So because it's considered a wetland, am I correct in understanding that if we don't grant flexibility from 20 to 10, one of the possible solutions is not to do underground because of its classification as a wetland? Is that true or is that not true?
Um, the, 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 thank you, Chair. Commissioner Roman, good to see you. Happy New Year. The, the, the reason that the wetland plays a factor is that it's designation as a wetland. Chair Solberg mentioned that it's really used as a stormwater pond, but once it's designated as a wetland, it has different rules than a stormwater pond. So they have to meet minimum buffering requirements, and that's in order to help keep the, the body clean and protect it. But so they have to meet a minimum 20 foot buffer requirement and an average of 40. So where that affects the new proposed stormwater management pond is that they can only expand it southern, in the more southern direction so far before they're kind of bumping into their minimum and average buffer requirements. So that's kind of the, that's how it pertains to the wetland, if I'm capturing your question correctly.
So, but the plans otherwise, other than the proposed stormwater capture, the proposed plans don't have any underground storage, correct?
They do not.
So if absent some flexibility, that would have to become probably their alternative.
Correct.
Meet the wetland test and if they weren't granted the 20 to 10.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions from commissioners at this point? Looks like I think we're all done asking you questions right now, Mr. Johnson. Is the applicant available tonight? Mr. Johnson, do you know?
I believe, I believe so.
Yeah. Good evening, Chair Solberg, Commissioners. Thank you, Nick. This is Tom Strom with United Properties. We have our team on the, on the call, including Tom Lincoln with Kimley Horn, our civil engineers, well as Evan Jacobson with Tucci Montgomery Architecting and Keith Alstead, our senior VP on the call. I want to thank staff. Nick, great. Thank you for the, the report here. We, we just, I just wanted to comment here to answer any questions. We're just really excited and hopeful to get something going on the site. I know we've been working with your, the city's HRA for a number of years since we acquired the site in 2017 and sold it to the HRA in 2018. So we hopefully have a good solution here that'll work for everybody and we're really excited.
Thank you, Mr. Strom. And maybe to continue on this wetland and stormwater issue. Mr. Strom, if, if the project, and just to continue, I think on Commissioner Roman's line of question, if it, if the stormwater management pond is, cannot meet those setbacks, I guess part of the question is, are you, are you able to go to alternate methods? And part of what I'm asking here is understanding, are we creating another obstacle to providing non-motorized alternatives in a corridor that, as I understand, in Edina is going to have a bunch of housing to the north and who knows what the rest of this will be. But if we place obstacles in the way now, means that bicyclists and pedestrians wouldn't be able to use this in the future. So kind of a long-winded question, but just trying to get, gauge maybe your engineering team, some thoughts from them.
Sure. I'll, thank you, Chair. I'll do my best. Tom Lincoln, feel free to jump in here. I, I think, as Nick has mentioned, we, you know, we're exploring the different trade offs. If we don't get flexibility from the city, then we have to go seek flexibility from Excel due to the setbacks from their tower and as well as, as, as the watershed and working within the wetland. So long answer to your question is, I think there's probably a solution. It may be below grade storage. It may be something else. And so I think we're, we're working our way through that. I don't know, Tom Lincoln, if you have anything else to add?
So I think that's a good, this is Tom Lincoln with Kimley Horn. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
We've been working through alternatives and working with the various limitations to the site. And so we're trying to meet the city's goal of a 20 foot setback for that pond. You know, we do have alternatives in terms of retaining walls within the pond and, and potentially going underground. We'd like to avoid that. And so we've been working with Nick and we're working through with the Nammout Creek Watershed District as well to better understand the buffer that is required by this wet, wetland.
Yeah, no, thank you, Mr. Lincoln and Mr. Strom for that answer. I appreciate. Any further questions for the applicants?
If I could just interrupt, this is Tom with United Properties again. Nick or somebody else, would you mind unmuting Keith? He just sent me a text saying that he, I don't know if he has something to add here. Apologize.
Mr. Markergard?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Alstead, you, you should be able to speak now.
Yep, I can, thanks. And I just wanted to say, Mr. Chair and the members of the commission, we have appreciated how your staff has worked through issues with us. We still have, we acknowledge, we still have some, some issues to overcome here. They, they seem minor in the scope of things, but they're, they, they do exist. And you've zeroed in on most of them with your questions as far as the sidewalk and the, the wetland setback, et cetera, which we're still grinding through. But I just wanted to, it's been a kind of a, doing this stuff remotely has not been as rewarding as it tests developments. But it's, they've helped us grind through some tough problems and I just wanted to kind of voice that appreciation. Two other things I wanted to touch on quickly. One, staff brought up kind of a neighbor objection. And that from the neighbor to the north. And they have been very good neighbors in the time we've owned the hotels. We've maybe tried their patience a couple of times. And, you know, I've gotten a phone call. We've met for coffee and it's always worked well. And basically the same thing happened here. They, they were worried that we were going to be following traffic through their property on an easement that didn't, didn't require, you know, cost sharing and the maintenance of the road and everything. So they had, you know, nightmares of us sending a lot of cars over their pavement that they were responsible for fixing. We don't need that access. We do need it as staff quite out, probably to run some utilities. So the easement itself will have to stay in place, but we have agreed with them in several calls and a couple of meetings to, to do wave, you know, to basically modify the easement so that we no longer have access ingress and egress rights over their property and just have that for utilities. So, and they, they, as it is, their email to Nick pointed out, they seemed happy with that outcome and are actually, I think, looking forward to a new, a new development on our site. With that, I'll shut up, but haven't been around this long without learning when to quit selling.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Alstead. Is there anything else? Or did we lose him?
I think that, I think that's all. Just one other clarification. I know Nick mentioned the, the 40 jobs. Again, total, the, the, the user or tenant on the site anticipates about 60 total jobs. And 40 was kind of net of what we were at the existing hotel, I'd probably say before COVID. As any hotel can attest during COVID, right? We were probably down to a bare bones group, but in total, I think they're anticipating about 60 employees on the site.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Strom. Yeah, I think that's, that's helpful as well to understand. Cause I was, I was going to ask a question at one point of that's a very big facility and 40 jobs. And maybe doesn't seem like as many as it could handle. So thank you for that. All right. Mr. Strom, Mr. Alstead, Mr. Lincoln, anything else you'd like to add?
Uh, no, sir. We look forward to your support and we'll answer any other questions you have along the way.
All right. Thank you. And Commissioners, anything more for the applicants? Otherwise, at this point, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. And Mr. Markergard, I know we have one in the audience that may want to speak. And so I'll ask Mr. Swanson if you'd like to come up and, and speak to this item. Mr. Markergard, if you could check online as well?
Sign in, Pat, but.
Yeah, nothing to sign in with, Mr. Swanson. You'll just have to say your name.
Right. So Kevin Swanson, just a citizen of Bloomington, Chair, Commissioners, staff. Pleasure to be in front of you today. I just had a couple of comments on this. I don't live too far from this area and was really enthused when I heard that this was going to be a medical office building. I thought that would be a tremendous use for this space. And since then, I'd heard that this was going to be turned into a high density car dealership. So I guess that's what kind of brought up my, my concern here tonight. And so I did a little research and, and just a funny fact is that back in 2015, there was an article in streets.mn that ranked this as the second most iconic place in Minnesota, the interchange of 494 and 100. Now I can think of about a dozen other places in Minnesota that are probably more scenic than this interchange. But as far as interchanges go, to me, this is pretty representative of the metro area and has a long history of, of kind of being in, you know, back when it was Lilac Drive and the whole thing. So I guess in that same article, there's a city spokesperson that said that this interchange has always been underappreciated. And I thought that was interesting that, and I feel like it still is underappreciated. And I thought that that medical office building would kind of bring that up from underappreciated to what I feel its potential would be. I counted 13 car dealerships in my quick search from, that goes from Highway 100 to Highway 77. And it seems like there's been more and more of these high And it seems like there's been more and more of these high-density dealerships going up within the recent years. And and I'm not quite sure why, but to me, they're very similar to a storage facility. Aesthetically, maybe a little more pleasing. 40 jobs, 60 jobs, to me, is pretty small number of jobs for 180,000 square foot facility. It is more than a storage facility, but you're storing cars versus people's stuff. It's not much different. I know it seems like, I'll do a pun here, the gears have sort of been set in motion back on 11/29 at the city council meeting, so I'm not sure if any of this will make a difference. But in my opinion, there's no precedence for auto dealerships within this interchange. I mean, there was a hotel before. I get hotels are complicated these days. But a business, an office business setting, to me, would make much more sense. And and I guess, you know, this interchange has been underappreciated for quite some time. It seems like we're still settling for less than it could be. And I'm tired of seeing our most visible corridor along 494 be used as a billboard with low, low job creation. And I'm not sure what else can be done about it, but in my opinion, I would like and encourage staff to maybe bring this up at a study session as far as what is the relationship between car dealerships and storage facilities. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Appreciate your comments here tonight. And with that, Mr. Markergard, is there anybody online that would like to speak to this item?
Mr. Chair, we have one call-in user I want to check in with. So call-in user, starting with 952-454. I will unmute you now. Would you like to provide testimony this evening?
The last four digits, 6134.
I can't see the last four digits.
Okay, so that this is Bill Junt with United Properties. I'm part of the team with Tom Strom and Keith Alstead. So I'm just listening in. So that's that's the outside call coming in.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Let me scan through the other attendees here. And they are all staff or HRA members.
Okay. All right. With, and I'll let you close the box and everything there. So with that, Commission members, seeing that there's no others in the chambers or online that would like to speak to this item and entertain a motion to close the public hearing, Commissioner Roman?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second? Commissioner Albrecht?
Second.
All right, Commissioner members, we have a motion and a second to close a public hearing. Any further discussion on that item? Not seeing any. All those in favor say aye by roll call. Commissioner Goldsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Roman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookton?
Aye.
And aye for myself. Motion passes. The public hearing is now closed on this item. Now for discussion, Commission members. Thoughts? Comments? Concerns? Ideas? Who's going first? All right. Looks like Commissioner Roman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll start with some thoughts. I don't have a ton of thoughts on this project, actually. And I've been trying to get a little more thought after Mr. Swanson shared his observations. You know, I think I think this is probably a reasonably good reuse of this property in that corners like this are not always easy to get to. They're highly invisible, as as was mentioned, but they're not always easy to get to. So things that maybe you don't visit as frequently are probably better uses in from my perspective versus something that's easy in and easy out. You know, I think I'm thinking about the comments that were raised from the public, you know. These higher-density facilities, I think, are probably better in many ways versus some of our older car dealerships with large amounts of surface parking. And so does this fit more in the direction we're heading in the city? Probably. Does, you know, everyone at the car, and we heard, as we've had discussions over the years, as we've updated our zoning, you know, car dealerships are the thing that everyone wants to have access to, but nobody really wants, right, in their prime location. So it's a push-pull. I think that this type of 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 structure where we are, you know, having in a fairly dense location versus, you know, it's not, it's not a car dealership. But if you look to the to the right on this image on the map, where there's an officer IT or technology building with a bunch of parking, that's your alternative. You know, which one takes up less land and which one leaves more opportunities for other redevelopment? So from those perspectives, I'm supportive of it. You know, I, members of this body who've been on this with me for a long time know that I'm very, very supportive of our transition to alternative fuel for vehicles. So anything that expands access to that for people, having bought three myself, and none of them have been able to be bought in Bloomington, I think it's it's a good thing. And, you know, in theory, in 20 years' time, this may become not a thing anymore. But in theory, this is, you know, a pretty visible place to say that, you know, in Bloomington is is one of them probably flagship places for, again, we don't know who this is, but I think we all may be able to infer who it is. This appears to be the flagship location for Minnesota. And, you know, Bloomington is on board with that. So my only observation is I'm okay with the 10-foot on the stormwater pond, but I guess I would say if they're not able to not able to treat it all above ground, then I would not be, if some of it has to be below ground, then I would say, you know, stick with the 20. If, you know, if we can, if they, if it can be done and rethought within the 10-foot setback that we require, I'm okay with the 10-foot. But if if that can't be done, then I just assume have it be 20 and move it underground. But I trust the engineers to know administratively whether that can or can't be done. But overall, I find that I'm supportive of this project and the reguiding and rezoning.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Roman. Commissioner Abdi, I saw you had your hand up, but maybe pull it back down now. Is that, oh, you're back up.
Thank you, Chair. I I had, professionally, I can understand the policy, excuse me, the policy directions. To begin with, I will be in support of the application as proposed in moving it forward. But from a policy perspective, I feel like the gentleman who spoke from the podium, really, his comments resonated with me because professionally and as a resident, you know, how do we have private development? Because this parcel is not owned by the city where the city could say, you know, we are not going to sell you this land for you to build, you know, a car storage or a car dealership. But, you know, the city would have had a different incentive to allow and, you know, support the rezoning, encourage more development in the, and a development that would have attracted some of the things that the gentleman talked about, which I would have loved to see, especially at this corner. But there is a struggle between policies that we adopt that, in this case, we are adjusting to allow for this development to happen whilst also working with the market or private development, because we cannot turn away this private developer and say, you know what? We are not going to allow you to do this. I mean, we could do that technically by denying their zoning applications and all these other applications, but are we also, you know, we, the city doesn't want to see private development happen, tax spaces, you know, generate tax at the sites. It's it's a I don't, I don't want to say it's a game, but it's like a push-pull factor where, you know, how does the city then control or encourage, you know, better developments that will generate some of the interests that the gentleman talked about, that especially at the site where it's in high visibility. But as the Commissioner mentioned, accessibility might be uniquely challenging for some of the attractive features that might be coming to the site. You know, access does exist at the site. So I guess I just wanted to recognize the gentleman's comments. That really does resonate with me personally. But it's a struggle between, you know, supporting a development which does meet the standards for this area and the policies are supportable, but also recognizing, you know, what are we giving away for future development at the site, considering that the site is a privately-owned site? So private versus public is, I guess, where I am, you know, struggling. And how do we, as a city, grow and not have a lot of big boxes, you know, at major sites where we could have potential for more housing, more jobs and whatnot? So thank you. I'll just leave it at that.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Abdi. That's good insight. Commissioner Goldsman? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Albrecht was first, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Excuse me. I just want to echo Commissioner Roman's comments regarding the stormwater management layout. I too would agree that if the setback, if the new new configuration doesn't work and they're forced to go underground, I would be fine with the way that it's laid out here, particularly because there is no sidewalk there. I think the concern around safety that Mr. Johnson mentioned, you know, biking, tripping, walking into the stormwater pond is probably a lot less likely, given the proximity to the other stormwater pond as there would be if there was a sidewalk here. And as Mr. Johnson mentioned, it's more likely to extend the the walk network to the north than it would be towards the south. The other comment that I have is just regarding the location. And I think a few people have mentioned this, which is, you know, in my professional, my day job, we are looking at new office locations and actually looked in this kind of this area and actually decided that it was too far away from the highway. We wanted more direct access for someone to come off the highway and get to the facility. So I do believe, though it's not an extremely convenient location, meaning you come off the highway and you get right there, the visibility is such that it doesn't matter that much and that folks will still find it. And I think that actually this makes a lot of sense for this site, given the constraint of the access to the highway, both north and the east, being substantially more far away than, let's say, France Avenue. That being said, I am in full support of this application. I think I would like to see more our sales facilities kind of move into this model. And I, I, you know, we had a really great, robust conversation at this body about this high-density motor vehicle sales. And I think, you know, it is, in my opinion, a good use for this site. I think there are probably other places that are a good use for this site. But if I think Mr. Johnson was circling a big parking lot just in the east, as he's showing on the map here, and straying away from things like that and more of that high-density kind of more space for other things to exist around it would be would be great. So I would encourage, you know, the city to encourage other applications like this, given that it is high-density, yet it is still auto-oriented. So kind of best of both worlds for where we are in the market right now. And as Commissioner Roman mentioned as well, you know, a electric vehicle facility too. I think that's all that I have to say. So I guess I'm in full support of the application as is, but with a caveat about the stormwater management system being being okay with the way it's displayed.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Albrecht. I appreciate that. Commissioner Goldsman?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the staff's presentation. I've written down a few comments and questions along the way. So bear with me while I get through them. So one of the things that came to mind is, you know, we had a lot of conversations in November about this new high-density vehicle. And I remember we talked about the existing sites that could potentially have this high density. And we were very concerned about it being the wrong place, you know, within the South Town area or potentially on American Boulevard. And I think one of the things that we were nervous about is for something like this to go into some of the areas that we think is going to be more pedestrian-focused, more residence, more transit-oriented. And I I was happy to see that this site was or this property was not in one of those existing zoning or, you know, zoning locations. So first of all, I think the location of this makes sense, very prominent and way better than any of the existing, I think, C3 zoning properties in that are currently in in the city. So that was my number one comment. Moving on to the second, and I appreciated that we looked at where their sidewalk is located and how it connects to the existing 78th Street. One of my comments there, though, is it zigzags and thinking about winter time and just accessibility. Although it is connected, it didn't seem very straightforward for for walking. And so that's just one thing that I thought about is if that could be, you know, that zigzag could be reduced to the city street would be ideal. Obviously, that water pond and drainage is going to be a concern. But the zigzag just seemed to be a lot, especially in this time of year with its winter. One question that I should have raised earlier is around charging. And knowing that if this is the flagship site for this vehicle manufacturer, would there be, you know, obviously, sales of the of the vehicles, but then also thinking about charging of those vehicles? That would create additional traffic into the location in and out and at all hours of the day potentially? And so one of the questions that I had, and it came up, maybe just something we need to think about, is is charging on-site and what does that do to the site flow and traffic into the to the property itself? And the last question that I, or comment that I had was really around the location. And at first, I was, you know, saw the proposal, and I was disappointed that it wasn't housing. I feel like we could, you know, we obviously have a deficit of housing that's needed for our residents. And and I was disappointed that it wasn't housing. However, when I thought about the location of the site in the intersection of two large highways, you know, I thought, well, maybe this isn't the right place for housing. And I was happy to hear that there is housing on the other side of Viking Avenue and the Edina side of of the street. So, you know, in all, I think I just had some comments and a couple of questions, some feedback. But overall, we'll be supporting the application. I think it's a a good move and it's a good development for the city, city of Bloomington.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Goldsman. Did you want your question about charging? Did you want that answered? I think we could ask Mr. Strom if he would be, if we could unmute him and specifically ask that question, if you like?
Yeah, otherwise I was going to ask that question based on what Commissioner Goldsman brought up.
Mr. Strom, I believe you're unmuted if you want to, if you can answer that question for us.
Sure. Thank you, Chair. Commissioners. Let me see here. The, being careful not to say things.
Understand.
The site will have some standard charging stations, obviously. And, you know, I'm not entirely sure if they will be public or not. I doubt it will be. But if if the, I'll call it the big chargers are installed, it would probably just be a couple of them. And, you know, I don't think would negatively impact any of the traffic, you know, add any significant amount of traffic to the site.
Okay, so my understanding there, Mr. Strom, is it sounds like there may be chargers there, but it would not, from your understanding, it wouldn't be a, should I say, a destination for charging?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's right. And, you know, there's the standard, I'll call it, the kind of the chargers that you would see, you know, around the city at different locations. And then there's the the larger, faster charging stations that may or may not be installed by the tenant. And if they are, I'm not sure that it would be public, but. the larger faster charging stations that may or may not be installed by the tenant. Um, and if if they are, I I'm not sure that it would be public, uh, but and if it is a destination, it'd probably only be a couple of them and probably wouldn't significantly impact the traffic volume to the site. So I hope I know it's not a cut and dry answer, but hopefully I answered it.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Roman may have another question here for you.
Just going a little further, um, so again, the type of charging, I think that's a question is level three charging, which is direct current four hundred eighty volts, if uh, short term, but perhaps higher frequency of vehicles. If there were to be some of the level three charging installed, I think the question may be where? And there's one thing, Commissioner Wilson raised the question about potentially about more traffic at all hours of the day, because um, you know, if it's a, even if it's limited to the vehicles sold and manufactured by this manufacturer. Um, it's a more, my question more, I don't have a problem with that. I'm just wondering if there's been discussion as to where on the site it would be, and I'm more thinking about uh, impact potentially to adjacent uses at uh, later hours.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, I don't know if Evan is on or maybe Tom Lincoln knows. I'm gonna, I don't remember where on the plan. And on my screen, I can't really see. We've got some charging on the east side of the building. There's three, it looks like, but I don't remember where the, where all the charging stations were.
And let's see, uh, do we need to unmute them, Mr. Markerguard, just for that particular question?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I will do that.
Mr., is that uh, Mr. Lincoln and Mr. Uh, Alstead and uh, I missed the last name on Evan, uh, Jacobson, Mr. Jacobson? Any uh, answer to where those potential charging stations would be located on the facility?
Good evening, Commissioners and Chair. Evan Jacobson, Tushy Montgomery Architects. Where Nick has highlighted on the east side of the site, that is probably one location of uh, a charging station. And then really the only other anticipated charging stations that we have um, would be on the west side, right outside of the kind of northwest corner of the lobby, showing four chargers there. And those would actually be for uh, test drive vehicles.
Okay.
So really the only uh, additional charger that's anticipated at this time is that one directly to the east of the site that wouldn't be permanently used by uh, the facility.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for that information. That's, I think, helpful to understand um, that this really doesn't look like to be a public um, charging facility as much as it is just providing charging uh, opportunity for people uh, potential customers. So uh, thank you for that information. And with that, uh, oh, Commissioner Roman, you have another question?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this is Mark for staff. Based on that same thing, again, supportive of of the idea of expanding this kind of infrastructure. And I know a few years ago, we adopted standards on charging uh, infrastructure. If um, this specific uh, vendor were to want to put in some of that uh, level three charging, would that be able to be done just with a simple electrical permit, or would that require any further review, given this that that uh, level three type of charging?
Mr. Johnson or Mr. Mark?
Just thinking about impact on adjacent uses.
Yeah, Chair Solberg, Commissioner Roman, thanks for the question. I I was uh, debating whether to jump in and kind of getting ahead of that. But uh, yeah, we did adopt a EV charging station ordinance now. Obviously, it's uh, was intended more applicable for any potential site that might add EV charging. This is um, uh, has its own unique uh, flavor to that. But um, basically what our regulation state is that if you have proprietary uh, charging stations that only uh, only fuel certain types of vehicles, then it can't exceed five percent of your uh, required parking. And in this case, their required parking is eighty-nine spaces. So I think technically per ordinance, only five percent of eighty uh, eighty-nine uh, could be the proprietary chargers, except for excess parking. Now, if if it's parking that is not required uh, by code, my thought is that those spaces uh, typically could be utilized for additional proprietary above the five percent. Um, and then the the only other uh, consideration, um, it would be just an electrical permit. You're correct on that. I have reviewed those uh, in the past. It doesn't require any uh, much formal planning and zoning action other than the review of a permit. Um, the only other thing I was going to mention is that um, if they are, if there are chargers in excess of five percent of the required parking supply, uh, they can't be restricted stalls. In other words, it can't be EV charging only. Someone who's just driving a typical combustion automobile, uh, if it's above that five percent, does have the right to park there. So those are, that's, that's the, how it relates to ordinance.
When we did that with the five percent, we didn't differentiate between levels of charging, I I remember.
Um, I don't believe, Mike Palermo is probably available if we want to get into the real nitty gritty.
No, it's okay. Again, I think, again, our, mainly, my issue is not about doing it. It's about when it does come up about, you know, impact and primarily the area where we would be concerned, I think, with the impact would be along the north of the site. Um, and I think, you know,
Sure.
I think has good judgment on that, and you've probably heard our thoughts.
Indeed, yeah. It it just focused more on the non proprietary versus proprietary. We didn't differentiate the levels.
Okay. All right, uh, Commissioners, any further questions or thoughts on this? I guess um, looking for anything there, but uh, at this point, you know, I think this application, I'll give my, maybe my two cents here. Um, this is a, you know, I think the size of a facility like this and and really auto dealerships in general are a destination. Um, people don't just randomly, typically uh, randomly drive into any kind of um, auto sales dealership just because they drive by and decide they're going to buy one. Um, and so having this in a, in a location um, that maybe not as convenient as uh, I think Commissioner Albrecht talked about, um, quarter mile from the interchange uh, to the north and well, further than that on four ninety-four. Um, but I think one of the other things that stands out to me, and I think it it was something uh, um, former Commissioner Swanson mentioned and, you know, is it a auto storage uh, versus a storage? And I think to me, the differentiator here is um, this is um, an indicator of the support that Bloomington has. Um, as we talk about some of our comp plan and sustainability and that, that uh, a electric auto dealer and hopefully more of the conventional auto dealers uh, will be able to be uh, expand their electric fleet in Bloomington so that Bloomington can be looked at as a town that's friendly to this, uh, friendly on sustainability. Um, and so in some ways, when I look at the corridor and we talk about former Lilac Road or Lilac Way um, as a place to enjoy, I think an electric vehicle almost is a way to exemplify that because it's no longer putting carbon um, into the atmosphere. Um, so to me, that's a differentiator. Um, from the standpoint of the density, I think, you know, the benefit here is this is the sort of thing you want along major interstates. Uh, you want to get that that high density in there. We don't want kind of the sprawling one story, two story um, low density type use. And so um, generally, I can be very supportive of this. However, the one thing, for as much as I mentioned, uh, electrification and sustainability, what I would like to see is that we do, we put a step forward to say infrastructure is one thing, but we also need to plan for that infrastructure for the future and ensure that sidewalks, when they can be built, are built. Um, waiting because the rest of the network isn't there just creates more and more of a problem, because I can imagine the parcel to the north of this saying, well, they didn't build to the south, so why should we build um, when we redevelop? And we could, we could, I could see as an entity that we start to fall, fall into that logic. Um, so I I still would like to see it. I see it is still a condition uh, that they build that sidewalk. I'm, I'm okay with the, as long as it's held, um, and they provide that surety for it. But I really uh, would prefer um, that it's built uh, when this facility is built. It's just another piece that goes towards that sustainability. So um, with that, I'll conclude my comments. Commissioner Crookton?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thought I'd get a couple of words in before we uh, move this forward. So uh, just to touch on a lot of the things that people have been talking about with the uh, the site of this, um, I am in support of it. Um, you know, I appreciate Mr. Swanson uh, his comments in that he um, maybe I could put it a different way and say he has high standards for what uh, type of development he wants to see in the city. And if uh, you follow along the planning commission closely, you know, I I share that as well, and I have high standards for what we um, what we see with new development in our city. Uh, I I think maybe a caveat to that is I think I'm more sensitive to certain types of development. Uh, what I should say is I'm, certain locations I'm more sensitive to than others. Um, I'm very sensitive to um, the Normandale Lake Office Park because we have a very limited amount of parcels there, and I think we need to do the right thing. I'm very sensitive to Bloomington Central Station because we have a limited number of parcels there. And I think everyone knows I'm I'm sensitive to what happens there. This is not a site I had on my shortlist of being sensitive to. This has been touched upon. It's hard to get to. It's not really walkable. I don't see it becoming walkable. It's it's not, it's not one of the areas I have on my list that I need to be sensitive to, you know. Uh, Pan American, some of the stuff we're doing on Lindale, I think there's increased sensitivity there. And I am sensitive to what happens here. I'm happy to see it's multi-story. I think that's the right thing to do. I think this is a reasonable use for this. A four story auto dealership, I think, is moving in the right direction and as opposed to our older stock of dealerships we have in the city. And so uh, with all of that, uh, I can support this application today.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Cookedon. All right. Any further discussion? Otherwise, I would entertain uh, and what I understand, um, the first of three motions on this? Any further discussion? Not seeing any. Commissioner Goldsman?
If I may, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
In case PL two zero two one dash two five one, I move to recommend approval of a comprehensive plan map amendment to re-guide seven eight five one Normandale Boulevard from community commercial to regional commercial.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Goldsman. Commissioners, we have a motion in front of us to recommend approval. Is there a second? Commissioner Albrecht?
Second.
All right. Commission members, we have a motion and a second in front of us to recommend approval of comprehensive plan amendment to re-guide seventy-eight fifty-one Normandale Boulevard from community commercial to regional commercial. Any further discussion on that item? Not seeing any. All those in favor say aye by roll call. Commissioner Goldsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Roman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookedon?
Aye.
An aye for myself. Motion passes. Moving on, um, we have a second motion. Would somebody like to make that? Commissioner Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In case PL two zero two one dash two five one, I move to recommend approval of rezoning seventy-eight fifty-one Normandale Boulevard from CS one to C three PD.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Albrecht, we have a motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Cookedon?
Second.
All right. Commission members, we have a motion and a second in front of us to recommend approval of rezoning seventy-eight fifty-one Normandale Boulevard from CS one to CS three PD. Uh, any further discussion on that item? Not seeing any. All those in favor say aye by roll call. Commissioner Goldsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Roman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookedon?
Aye.
An aye for myself. Motion passes. Moving on, we have a third uh, motion. Would somebody care to make that? Commissioner Cookedon?
Mr. Chair, in case PL two zero two one dash two five one, having been able to make the required findings, I move to recommend approval of preliminary and final development plans for a four story, high density motor vehicle sales facility located at seven eight five one Normandale Boulevard, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Cookedon. Is there a second? Commissioner Goldsman?
Second.
All right. Commission members, we have a motion in front of us to make the required findings, to move the approval, to to recommend approval of the preliminary and final development plans for a four story, high density motor vehicle sales facility located at seventy-eight fifty-one Normandale Boulevard, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report. Any further discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor say aye by roll call. Commissioner Goldsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Roman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookedon?
Aye.
An aye for myself. Motion passes. This item will be moving forward to the city council on February seventh as a public hearing. Again, this item will move forward to the city council on February seventh. And with that, um, we are uh, going to take just a very quick break here and I will turn the chair uh, to Chair Lewis so that she can uh, begin the meeting of the HRA.
Thank you. Um, I am going to, I would like to call to order the January sixth meeting of the Bloomington HRA. And I'm going to begin the meeting tonight by administering the oath of office to our two new commissioners. Uh, Commissioner uh, Vicky Hoakeam and Commissioner Nathan Coulter. Um, Nathan, are you still there? I know you had to leave at seven thirty. I see him. Can you unmute? Can you unmute him? Nathan?
Chair Lewis?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Hoakeam, Nathan sent me a message. He had to leave.
Okay, I knew he had to leave at seven thirty. Um, I was hoping we would be able to get the oath of office done. Um, this is still, should allow us to have a quorum. So um, we will do your oath of office and I understand that you have a copy. All right, um, rather than trying to have you repeat after me, I'm just going to have you read the oath of office. So whenever you're ready.
I, Victoria Hoakeam, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Minnesota and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of the Housing and Redevelopment Authority in and for the City of Bloomington, in the County of Hennepin, and State of Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoakeam. Um, now that we have sworn you in, I will now do the roll call. Um, my list here, all right. Uh, I know Commissioner uh, Coulter had to leave. Commissioner, Commissioner Hoakeam?
Present.
Uh, Commissioner Thorson?
Here.
Um, and Commissioner Lewis, Chair Lewis, I am here. That does represent a quorum. So I um, will now, actually, at this point, I'm going to turn over the meeting um, to the planning staff. And during the meeting, uh, once I've turned it over, you'll be able to ask questions directly of staff without having to go through me first. We're going to make it a little more uh, informal so that you can get as much information as you need. So I will now turn over the meeting to the planning staff. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Palermo, where are you uh?
Thank you, Chair Lewis. This is Mike Palermo. Uh, I am a planner. These, this is kind of part two. And let me see if I can get my presentation up here. And let's see if this works. Has everybody seen that?
Yes, we can see it.
All right. Uh, like Chair Lewis had mentioned, um, as we get to the discussion, if you want to use the raise your hand feature, I can call on you and that might uh, simplify things a little bit. You know, it's a little bit easier to have these discussions in person where, you know, virtual, it's a little bit more tough, but um, I'll look at the the raise the hand feature. Um, but like I said, this is part two of our single family and two family uh, development standards. Um, and to get, recap some of our background and goals, um, with this update, we're looking at our development standards with ways that we can encourage more housing options, uh, increase affordability if we can through those standards, address racial equity and and encourage healthy and sustainable communities. These kind of, these goals align with our uh, council strategies, strategic priorities. And just to recap of that first meeting, we talked a lot about affordability and what the, our standards can and can't address. You know, we can, uh, chip away a little bit at land costs with the, with our lot size and maybe with our building, uh, design standards, with some of those built-in costs. There's other things that influence costs that we can't, uh, necessarily address, like the cost of mortgage or, uh, closing costs. Um, that's just outside of the zoning code and development standards. And why would, there is an affordability issue that's out there is because we just were under-producing units, especially after two thousand and eight, you know, crash. Uh, now we're trying in this catch-up period where we need to create more of all our unit types. Um, and as we are aware, we have, uh, equity issues, our ownership gap is thirty-five percent for our BIPOC community or Black and Indigenous people of color, compared to seventy-five percent for our white, non-Hispanic. So that, that's a huge disparity. Um, part of it is just accessing, um, some of these homes and some of it is that affordability aspect. So I won't go, you know, in the interest of time, I won't get into details of, um, our health and environment, but, um, these are factors that we talked about in our internal staff group. Um, just the healthy aspects of living in a single-family home, there's a better air quality, you know, you don't have that congestion that's creating air quality issues in the super-dense city. Um, and you can really look at social determinants of health. Um, and it relates a lot to your stable housing because you're in a sta-, if you can be in a stable house, you can connect with your community members and make healthy choices. You can rely on those networks. You can, um, do better in school because your children are, are not shifting schools. Um, these all can in fact, impact your health over the long term. And then there are larger system things that we talked about, like complete streets where you have sidewalks that encourage you to, uh, to walk or bike facilities for active transportation or just access to parks. And these things are important and the city influences that, but are not necessarily something that, uh, are development standards. And similarly with the environment, there are kind of these system-wide things like our stormwater requirement, impervious surface. Um, and then there's site, site-specific things and it, it's difficult for us to require some of these site-specific things because the building code kind of sets what our energy standards can be and we're kind of subject to that building code. Um, so really when we started to get into the discussion on health and environment, a lot of what we talked about in that first meeting were really kind of the best, um, reckon, best issues to address some environment. And it really kind of kept coming back to compact design. Um, having more density, but not too dense that you, you lose some of the, you know, advantages to the environment and health. So with that, I'm just gonna jump in because it's already, uh, a little bit later. So, um, the big thing that we talked about last time and the big thing that really I want to hone in on today is, um, minimum lot size and tied to that is our, our median lot width requirement. Um, and I'll kind of go through our standard and some of the options and what I'd like. And I don't think through the WebEx feature, I can do a polling. Not giving me that option, I don't think. So, um, that's it. Um, so I want people to do a poll, but what I think I'll have people do when we get toward the end of the section, um, I'll have you, I'll just call out the option, have you raise your hand to kind of do an informal vote on is this the option that you think we should move forward? Because that, what the hope is here at the end of this is to kind of have some direction on, um, just, you know, specific ordinance, uh, recommendations. And I'll be bringing this to the city council, um, at the end of the month and can gather their input, kind of finalize, um, what we'll do for a public hearing. Final ordinance amendment. So for this first item, the minimum lot width and me, or minimum lot size and median lot width, these two are kind of intrinsically tied together because our, our lot depth doesn't change, right? Um, our block face is the block face that it is. So if we're reducing our minimum lot, our minimum lot size, it's really that width that is gonna achieve that difference in lot size. Um, and so right now we have for properties, a median site width. Um, it's eighty percent of the median of properties located in five hundred feet. So assuming a location where you have similar-like lots, uh, in size, you'll have to have purchased four lots to eke out a fifth lot just due to the median lot width because you're looking at eighty percent. So really, that is something that we need to, um, would need to address for this to have any kind of meaningful change. Or maybe that's not something we want to do a chance. So we can, we can talk about that as we get into it. So option one, this is kind of the, the lowest small end would be a fifty-foot width lot, uh, which with our typical block face would be about sixty-five hundred square feet. Um, and this would mean that many of our hundred-foot wide lots, we have quite a few hundred and hundred and twenty-foot wide lots that are kind of double lots. Not quite double lots, but, you know, larger lots, um, that could be easily split are more likely to develop. You know, the more lots you have to purchase, the harder, it's another obstacle to develop. You're dealing with more people, it's harder to manage. So, uh, redevelopment potential kind of loses the more properties you have to acquire. Um, so this is an example in Richfield that shows that, um, fifty-foot lot. Um, some of these wouldn't quite meet our impervious surface standards. And looking here with the, the garage in the back and a long driveway, and this probably is over our thirty-five percent maximum. Um, so that is something to consider when we look at what that actually means. With, uh, a ten forty Rambler, two-car garage in a driveway, a thirty-foot setback, you're pretty much maxed out on your impervious surface. Wouldn't allow you those extra things like a shed maybe in the backyard or a patio. Those are things that also account toward that impervious surface or, uh, expansion outwards. You would have to expand upward. And so, uh, those are, you know, design impacts to what could happen with, uh, going to this level. And furthermore, it require, this requires a comprehensive plan amendment. This is above our five units per acre. Um, so this is something that, uh, for our low-density guide plan designation. So this is something we would need to address in our comp plan to make that consistent. Um, example here, this is in Richfield at Seventy Fourth. So it's, it's not out of context for our area. Option two, a few blocks away in Richfield, this is our, our second option. If we go to sixty-foot wide lot, little bit bigger, about seventy-eight hundred square feet. Um, some of our lots are a hundred and twenty feet wide. We don't have a good number on how many are a hundred versus a hundred and twenty feet wide. We don't have that lot width. We don't just have, have that data. We have lot size, but not lot width. So can't give you the exact number. Um, similarly, I was gonna mention, um, the total lot that would meet, uh, that are thirteen thousand square feet, so twice as big as sixty-five hundred, um, was about forty percent of our lots. Now to say how many of those are actually developable, it's really hard to say. That would be easily split or, you know, a house that would accommodate that. Um, so it, you know, I'm just throwing that number out there that there's sixty percent of our lots still would not be able to be easily split and probably a small percentage of that would be. Um, so looking at a sixty-foot wide lot, about thirty percent of our lots are at that, um, about sixteen thousand square feet or larger. Um, still fairly compact design, um, for that blockability aspect that we're looking for. Um, it's still better than our current standard of eleven thousand square feet. So it's more financially viable. Um, it would also require a comprehensive plan amendment, um, to, for our low-density to increase a little bit. Uh, so this is an example in Richfield. Um, you know, a little less of that issue with impervious because it's a little bit larger. And then option three would be like a seventy-foot lot. So our standard lot is eighty feet. So looking to reduce that a little bit, seventy-foot lot, um, with about eighty-seven fifty for square footage. Um, less opportunity for redevelopment. They're still out there. Um, uh, but one advantage of this over our current code is that it would bring a lot of lots into conformance. We have about fifty percent of our lots that are under eleven thousand square feet that are still above this eighty-seven fifty. So, um, this is actually in Bloomington. These are lots that are all seventy feet wide. So we have some local examples of that, um, that are developed in this style. So this is where staff felt comfortable that we, you know, this would be a good option, um, on the conservative side of things, if that's where we are thinking we want to go. Um, but obviously less development potential if you have a, you know, like I said, our eighty-foot is our kind of standard lot. And those are kind of our older lots. So like more likely to redevelop that those houses age and maybe aren't as maintained or, you know, by virtue of being seventy, sixty, seventy years old. Rates for, it's more potential for redevelopment than a house that was built in the eighties. To do a fifty-foot wide lot, you know, two lots, you can eke out three lots with two eighty-foot wide lots at a hundred and sixty feet. Similarly, with a sixty-foot wide lot, if you find, happen to find one of those kind of slightly larger lots that are a hundred next to an eighty-foot lot, you might be able to get three lots out of two. So there's more development potential than say a seventy-foot lot would, which would require, you know, two hundred and ten feet width, which would likely be more lots to acquire to do that. So with that, I think I'll open up discussion, um, and this is where you can utilize that hand feature. If there's one option that speaks to you that you think, um, we should move in that direction, um, or pros and cons that you see. And.
Madam Chair, uh, Mr. Chair, I just want to note that, uh, HRA Commissioner and Councilmember Nathan Coulter rejoined and was asking whether this would be a good opportunity to swear him in. So he's an official member to take part in the.
I think that would be a really, that is, that's a good idea. Uh, Commissioner Coulter?
Yes, I am here. I am sorry for my absence, but we.
That's all right.
Time is.
Do you have the oath, um, in front of you right now?
I do indeed.
All right. Um, rather than me trying to have you repeat after me, I am just gonna have you read the oath. By yourself. So ever you're ready.
Should I still raise my hand or?
You can if you want to. I don't, I did not make Commissioner Huqueem.
Okay, okay. I, I will just move on with it then. Uh, just so, so we have it here for the record. I, Nathan Coulter, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Minnesota and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of the Housing and Redevelopment Authority in and for the city of Bloomington, in the county of Hennepin, and state of Minnesota to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, Commissioner Coulter, and have the record show that Commissioner Coulter has rejoined our meeting. And I will turn it back over to, um, staff. Thank you.
Welcome, Commissioner Coulter. Um, so just to bring you up to speed quickly, we're talking about lot size, um, and potential options for reducing our minimum lot size and tied to that is our, our median lot width or, or the lot width that would have to go correspond with that. Um, we kind of have these three options and at this point, um, you can raise your hand. It looks like Commissioner Goldsman or Commissioner Roman, uh, has raised his hand. So I will call on you.
Thank you, Mr. Palermo. Um, I don't have a strong opinion on any of these. Um, I was, you know, doing some quick Google Earth, uh, measuring, uh, you know, having owned two different houses in Minneapolis and it, you know, the, uh, one was a smaller house. I think it was eight hundred square feet and one was a larger house, probably twenty-four hundred square feet, but both sat on a forty-foot wide lot. So, um, you know, fifty and sixty, I think, compared to that is, um, uh, not, not terrible. Uh, we didn't have a lot of, uh, a lot is probably a, maybe not the right term, but we have a, a fair number of lots in the city that are irregularly shaped, given our, either our natural features or the design of cul-de-sacs and whatnot. Uh, and what would we look to? I mean, we'd have the square foot measurement then in that case for those. I mean, there's probably not as many opportunities for redevelopment given in those irregularly shaped lots.
Yeah. So, Commissioner Roman, we, we look at, um, the building setback and do they meet the minimum lot width at the building setback? Or wherever they meet that, that, or minimum lot width, that becomes your, your minimum setback. So that's how we kind of treat those odd-shaped lots. Um, the where occurrence, we get some that are kind of three-sided that are unique that way, but usually we're able to kind of figure out where that median lot width or that lot width should be applied.
Okay. So, um, yeah, I guess for the sake of our discussion, you know, uh, not opposed to a smaller width, you know, I think if, if sixty feels like it can support a significant amount of expansion to support, expanding affordability, I'm okay with that. I don't necessarily need to, need to go to fifty. I hear that, you know, fifty makes it easier for a hundred to be divided up, but sixty also makes it easier for a hundred to be divided. You almost only get three out of two instead of four out of two, but, uh, I don't know what others' thoughts are on that, but I also recognize that moving too fast, too far on this can also cause, um, us to not accomplish what we're trying to accomplish because the, the pushback on going too far could also be, uh, counterproductive.
Mr. Palermo, it's, uh, Chair Solberg. I don't, I don't have the ability to raise my hand necessarily, so, um, just thinking a little bit.
Any other thoughts? I, I heard sixty looks for you and, uh, Commissioner Thorson? Our Board Member Thorson? Looks like you're muted.
Um, I would support fifty or sixty. I think we want to maximize the opportunity, um, with whatever other, uh, uh, regulations we have to, to make sure these, uh, work out well. But I, I am curious, uh, it was mentioned, uh, and I had the same, uh, thought, uh, typical Minneapolis lots are forty feet wide. And I'm just curious if you looked at forty feet. Now, I understand there's a big difference in that most of Minneapolis has alleys and I think that can make a difference as to whether or not those, uh, lots are usable. But having said that, many, many lots in Bloomington are eighty feet wide. And, um, to, uh, maximize the ability to, to redevelop and, and create more housing, had staff looked at eighty or, uh, forty, was it ruled out for any particular reason? Um, are there options if it, what, if you were to consider that? Obviously, we have driveways and we have, uh, you know, uh, street-forward garages. But are there a lot, other layouts that could work? So the, the bottom line is that, did you even? And did you consider?
Thanks, Commissioner Thorson. Yes, we, we did look at that. Um, yeah, part of the issue, like you pointed out, is, uh, alleys. We don't have alleys. Um, and, uh, when I was looking for that Richfield example, it, it was actually a little bit difficult. A lot of the Richfields that were examples that were smaller did have those alleys. So that, that's part of the consideration when you start to shrink that and you still have a garage or, uh, driveway space and then, you know, we have ten feet for our drive, for our living space and another five feet for our, our garage on the side setback. That's fifteen feet out of your forty. So you're, you're down to twenty-five feet for your house and then it, it, it gets real, you know, it's starting to get tight. Um, without that back access for a, a, a garage. So I, I think that's where we kind of saw the stopping spot at fifty and knowing that you could still meet your impervious. So that, that's part of it too, is the impervious surface. We, I was gonna bring this up later, but, um, we can talk about it now. Um, we talking with our engineering division. Um, it is something that we just, we, we cannot, we cannot get above that. There are onsite mitigation that they're open to that you can go above that if you do kind of onsite under, maybe underground detention. It's starting to become more, um, doable, more cost-effective, that they're willing to go above that if you can show that retention and infiltration, um. Um, uh, but just the design of our greater utility system, they said we can't go above that, it will just end up causing issues without major overhaul and total reconstruction of our, you know, stormwater system, and they said they're, they're not willing to, to do that, and that, you know, um, I, I understand that. But, uh, we do have language in our two-family home where you can go up to forty-five percent coverage with those other mitigation approved from our engineering, and they're willing to kind of utilize that as well for our single family. But, yeah, once you get down to those smaller lot sizes, it is more difficult, and we recognize that, you know, we, with that two-family, there is some opportunity to get some of those smaller lot sizes, um, that get closer to that number, but yeah, the forty feet, I think, was just a little too far.
Thank you. I, and the only reason I brought it up is, um, again, there are communities, uh, uh, more urban communities that have forty-foot lot width. Um, what's unusual, I assume about, or different about Bloomington, not only the lack of alleys, but there are deeper lots, and that's why I, I question whether or not, um, alternatives of the housing could, could, uh, help with that. But I understand it's, it's really a push.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Mr. Palermo, uh, this is Chair Solberg, I don't know if you can hear me this time?
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay, all right. It, I, I tried earlier, and for some reason, my microphone didn't work, first time ever, right? Um, you know, uh, so, maybe as far as these options and just thinking about it a little bit, um, trying to think of how these properties might come to redevelop, and I'm, you know, as you get to some of the, maybe the seventy-foot, uh, thinking about our, most of our, maybe our standard lots, if you want, if you want to say such a thing, uh, and you're, and we're trying to redevelop and to get additional housing or provide additional housing, it seems to me that at the, at the higher level, you're running the risk of two or three or four lots have to be purchased, which then, and I think, uh, Commissioner Coulter can talk to at the city council on Monday, there was a, a real, I think, discussion about risk of, uh, corporate, uh, type entities buying up these lots, and that's, I don't think something that the city is necessarily desiring. Yet, on the other hand, uh, much to what I think was already said, is maybe fifty-foot runs the risk of, of pushing the limits too far, and so, maybe for that reason, I could see a sixty-foot seems to be a nice middle ground. Um, and if we're getting into those hundred and twenty-foot lots, um, you know, that makes it, uh, available, but I think, as I think about that, that how would there be any availability, flexibility, flexibility to a lot that's a hundred feet or a hundred and ten feet wide, so that we're not unduly, uh, locking those out of, uh, parameters? But I think, just starting at fifty, just like, uh, I think Commissioner Roman said, maybe it gets people, um, maybe, maybe, uh, puts, puts the burden, uh, uh, makes it difficult to, to gain acceptance. So, those are my thoughts.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a good point, too. You know, there's always the opportunity to come back and tweak it again, if, you know, we make this change and nothing happens, and maybe that it could shows up on a work plan again in a couple of years that we noticed we haven't seen, you know, um, that, that's a lot of what we do is kind of those incremental. Um, but, uh, Commissioner Coulter, I see your hand raised.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I guess, you know, I, I would say, you know, for my, for myself personally, I wouldn't necessarily have a problem with a fifty-foot lot width. I think it, it does make a lot of sense, given, you know, as is noted, the, uh, the number of lots that we have that are a hundred feet wide. I think for me, the frankly, the, the biggest concern, I mean, I, I think, you know, Chair Solberg mentioned the, the continued corporate buyouts of, of homes and so on, and, and that, obviously, that is a concern. I think, for me, the biggest issue is this impervious surface standard, because as you know, I mean, in a, in a fifty-foot wide lot, you get a, a house, a garage, and a driveway, and that's it. No patio, no, no, nothing else, and, and that's, you know, I mean, in a fifty-foot wa- wide lot, you know, yeah, is this probably a starter home and, and that kind of thing, sure. Um, but I, you know, that, that still to me, it's, it's just a bit, a bit tight there, and, and, you know, given the need not to completely overhaul our city's infrastructure, um, I, I think we want to be wary of that. Um, I, so, what I would, what I would say is I, you know, I think in this case, that, that, Mike, that incremental approach that you referred to, I think that makes a lot of sense. Um, I would, I would personally advocate that it, it be a very intentional evaluation, that we, you know, we start with the sixty-foot, uh, lot, and then, um, you know, intentionally in a few years, have staff go and, and evaluate that and, and see how it's worked out, and see what the possibility might be of moving to fifty feet. Um, because they, you know, I think there is a lot of potential there, but, um, you know, and I, I mean, like I say again, for a starter home, that, that would probably be fine. Um, you know, if it's, you know, if it's a, a couple with no kids, for example, um, but, you know, I, I can tell you from personal experience that once, you know, once it's not just the two of you in the house, it, it gets pretty tight. So, um, those are, those are my thoughts. And I'm actually gonna have to jump off right now, I'm so sorry, I'm kind of coming and going from this meeting, but, um, it was good to see you all, and, and I'm looking forward to working with you.
Thanks for the input. Uh, Commissioner Copeston?
Thank you, Mr. Palermo. Um, a couple of commissioners have brought up, um, if we're too aggressive, we may sort of spook the public a little bit. Um, can you, where are we at with public outreach on this? Is, have we reached out to the public and started that at all, or, or where are we at with that?
Uh, not to the general public, no. I've spoken with a couple of developers, um, to get their input. Um, but, yeah, I want to get your input, and we'll start to do that, especially, you know, as we enter a, a, the study session with council as well. Um, right, I didn't want to spook people without having some more firm discussions with you on where the planning commission and, uh, HRA were really kind of heading in, you know, I want some feedback on something that might actually have some legs.
I appreciate the, uh, it's a bit of a chicken and the egg problem. Um, but I did want to just ask if there was, you know, some things, um, that are going to possibly have some fairly significant changes in our city. Uh, I'm thinking specifically of like the Lindell Avenue retrofit plan. Uh, the public was very involved in actually crafting, uh, that language that eventually went, uh, forward for approval for that plan. Was there consideration, uh, on this of involving the public earlier on in the process to sort of get more of a neighborhood feedback and use that to craft it? Maybe that's the plan after it meets us, or maybe could you give me just a little bit more of a, a look forward here?
Yeah, that is, that is the plan, to do that. We'll, we'll likely have a Let's Talk Bloomington page, um, I don't know if you're familiar with that, but that's one of our, our, uh, outreach mechanisms. Um, I think, from, uh, crafting the ordinance perspective early on, I think it, um, I, I kind of stayed away from that approach, one, because it's kind of hard to do outreach right now, um, and two, um, you know, we're looking at development that may or may not occur, you know, this is very still speculative, even with a sixty-foot lot or fifty-foot lot, the amount of development we're gonna get is probably not a huge amount. Um, and to go to the general public to say, well, what would you like? It's, you know, it's hard to kind of conceptualize, um, but what we'll likely, um, you know, some approaches are to do, um, kind of like a visual survey that shows what a fifty-foot lot is for sixty-foot or seventy-foot, and get people's thought, and, oh, this is too dense or not enough. Um, but yeah, uh, you know, that is kind of the next steps moving forward after this meeting to come up with that more engagement plan. Um, and still trying to figure out the best way to do that. Um, but, you know, as a homeowner, there's the one aspect, you don't want your neighborhood to change, um, so I, I understand that, but, you know, you're, you, people also are selling their lot, and, you know, there's that aspect, too, that it is your neighbor who is making that choice to move or sell, and to who they decide, but, yeah, we'll, we'll be working on that public engagement plan.
Thank you for that information.
Uh, Commissioner Abdi?
Thank you. Um, I apologize, my camera is off because I have a situation in the background that I don't want to be public. Um, I don't know if I'm off-base here, I know the options are in terms of, um, that we're discussing are the, um, the lot width, I'm guessing. Um, I shared this at the last time, we talked about, um, this, uh, this discussion we had last time in, in, in meeting, in-person meeting, excuse me. Um, I don't know why, and I don't want to set up paranoia frenzy here, but I, I live in the west, east side of Bloomington toward, um, eighty, you know, Eightieth and American, Eighty-second and American Boulevard area, um, and the socioeconomic I see in the city of Minneapolis is vastly different, and it's very apparent in the lots, types of homes, obviously, anywhere you go in the metro area, you know, the, in the lakes area where a lot of new development happens, um, you see a lot more investment going into those sites. So, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, these types, should this go forward and should this get adopted? What I imagine happening, or I pretty much see happening, is, you know, these types of lots will start popping up in areas that are slightly slower, uh, lower in socioeconomic communities, and then you see significantly tighter lots compared to our other parts, is, you know, further down you go to, uh, west of, uh, American Boulevard. Um, so, how do you then control for this? I know we cannot stop. Um, we had this discussion, I, this, I brought this up, at the first application that we reviewed, how do you then, where does the city step in and ha- make sure that we have equitable lot divisions? Um, you can't stop private developments if they buy up a lot, or if I own a lot that can need to, can be divided into two lots? I guess my question really, and fear I have, is increasing the visibility I see in the city of Bloomington of the different socioeconomic groups, um, and the types of investments that happen throughout the city. Um, and it cannot be, and I'm not saying it's intentional, that city is driving this, sometimes it's the market that's driving this, but if we do allow this, then how do we then control for and ensure that, um, we're not intentionally driving this type of thing into an area that is susceptible, easy up, easy to buy out, than it would be in near Norman Dale Lake, for example, uh, in those homes in, in that area? So, I don't know, I have a fear, and I do believe something like this will happen. Um, I'm a planner, uh, so, and I'm a resident of the Bloomington area, so I see this kind of thing as a policy which I encourage, I want it to happen, I want to see more families living in Bloomington. But we are also setting, setting something up that, um, could trigger an imbalance, um, in a, um, you know, nobody, personally, my family didn't buy in Minneapolis, we bought in Bloomington because of the large lot, the attractiveness of it, privacy that we could get. Uh, so, I guess, without mumbling too much, um, I guess what I'm trying to get at is then how do we step in? How do we ensure policy, you know, what kind of policy would we establish or will control with the city have to ensure that you're not gonna see significantly tiny lots on the east side of Bloomington than you would anywhere else in the city of Minneapolis, for example? So, that's my major concern, I don't want to freak out the public that might be watching this right now, uh, but I would be very much interested in what that would look like. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think you kind of hit, you're, you're correct in saying that, you know, that the east side is where we'll, we'll see the development, you know, just by virtue of when development occurred in the eighties toward the west, you know, and we have fifties, sixties more east, you know, we moved east to west, you know, the age of the housing stock, like you said, the size of the housing stock, the, you know, maintenance, uh, obviously plays a factor on a sixty-year-old home versus a twenty-year-old home. So, I think you're right in that, and if we, I think the best way to control for that would be to go with that more option three, where, um, seventy feet would allow some opportunity, but not a ton of opportunity to kind of, um, allow for redevelopment and be more limiting. I think that, that's really the best way to control, otherwise, you're right, the private market is how it's gonna function, and the city doesn't intervene in those transactions. Um, Commissioner Huqueem?
Thank you. I actually was gonna go with what, you know, Commissioner Abdi had just said, um, someone on the east side. I'm curious, too, on double lots, you ta- you know, you mentioned that and touched on that, and I know there's, I believe there's a lot more of those probably on the east side as well. So, again, I just, I really want to second that and that concern of what that's gonna do to the east side, and really, you know, um, drive the fact that we need to be, you know, I, I like that step-back approach, and I think we need to start, you know, maybe at that seventy feet, and, you know, see where that goes, just because I do want to protect our neighbors, and I want to protect the east side as the vulnerable side of the city, and not make them feel like that, you know, we're just pushing all this development that way. We already have a lot of development projects, being on the HRA, I know the development projects that are happening in the area, and I just don't want to, like, Commissioner Abdi hit it on, you know, the nail on the head on that, I don't want to scare people, but that's what we'll do if we go too aggressive with this, I believe. So, thank you.
Commissioner Copeston?
Thanks, um, staff and, and chairs. Um, one of the things that comes to mind, and I, I'm just thinking about it from the other side of the coin, is if we go for larger lot sizes and we have i- an option to, uh, redevelop a property, um, oh, what's to, you know, if this, if the property size is too large, what might happen is instead of redevelopment in smaller, um, you know, more starter homes, or what is similar to what is in the area, um, is what you'd start seeing what's happening in Minneapolis, which is much larger homes that really dwarf or don't meet the character of the neighborhood. Um, and one of the things that I'm thinking about is, I actually like the sixty-feet, um, with property, I think it helps keep the character of the neighborhood, um, especially as we were talking about the east side, but then again, it doesn't really allow for those super-large houses that just don't fit. Um, and so, have, by having a smaller lot size, you actually might have a little bit better, uh, fit with the existing stock of housing, even though it is a new development. So, I, I could go either way, but I was just thinking, uh, about it from a different perspective, um, just, just to see what others would think about that.
Any other thoughts?
This is Chair Solberg again. Um, I think there, the, good points across the board, and as I think about it, um, right, there's, there's, on a private market, there's no way to control, um, who buys and, uh, what happens, right? So, uh, certainly to, to, uh, Commissioner Abdi's comments of, you know, do, do you force out the people that you're trying to protect, uh, because the property is vulnerable to sale for any number of reasons, and somebody comes in and buys it, subdivides it, and puts two more expensive homes in there that, uh, change the neighborhood? And I, I'm, I wonder if this is, we think about this, um, and this is maybe a question for HRA, is really about, is this an opportunity where HRA can help? It's a provision for the city under the opportunity, housing ordinance, or for city-developed properties to, uh, increase that standard rather than just being, um, general private development? I, I don't know if that helps anything, but, um, it, 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 you know, it, it, maybe that's a way of, of trying to protect the neighborhoods that we want to, so, thank you.
Commissioner Roman?
Thanks. I just had one thing building off of what Commissioner Goldsman had mentioned, it reminded me, it's something I know that, um, I know I've mentioned in our planning commission before, is, um, you know, we do have smaller lots, especially on the east side, that, um, I've worried a little bit about people buying up and consolidating lots, um, for bigger homes, and so, it, again, not necessarily to have an answer here, but do, should part of this conversation also talk about maximum lot size? Um, because, you know, again, if I can buy up a less expensive home, I buy two of them, I consolidate them and replat them, even if I don't replat them, um, and suddenly I have a house that's out of character or is counterproductive to what we're trying to accomplish here, um, I just wonder if we should think about that a little bit.
Yeah, that's a good point. I'd agree with you, Commissioner Roman. If you're going one way, you should go the other and protect the neighborhood.
Commissioner Abdi. And then I'll get to Commissioner Thorson.
Thank you. I imagine, should we get, and maybe I'm jumping the gun and too far ahead in the process, but should we get an application in the future, should this go forward? And somebody is requesting a lot split to create two separate lots, but one of the lots, you know, and we've had this example a couple of months ago, maybe, when somebody had an existing house on a lot, they subdivided their lot to create a new lot for a new house. What if setback is not being met? And maybe this is just a policy direction that we can set aside so that whatever lots, lot, excuse me, lot width in this case, if they're not meeting the setbacks either for the existing house or for the new house that gets to be developed, if they do meet the lot width, but the situation or the placement of the new house or the existing house does not meet the setback requirement for that district, then the application should not be approved for a lot split. I think if we, and I don't know, there's obviously going to be analysis for practical difficulties for each variance, which is why I'm saying I may be getting ahead of myself in the, ahead of the vision here maybe. But just thinking ahead in terms of like, how do you then foresee potential splits that would seek more variances to allow for sub-standards in terms of the placement of the house, which are too close to each other? Or I guess I may be thinking way too far ahead of the process, but I would be interested in, you know, what that process would be like or if folks would be interested in terms of policy-wise, thinking ahead of, you know, not approving a variance because you are splitting a lot voluntarily. I don't know. But I may be looking for ways.
Yeah, we likely wouldn't approve the lot split then because you would be either creating a non-conformity or, yeah, if it was like a front setback that they didn't meet, but they still met the side setback, we would probably allow that because you're not, you're not adding to the non-conformity, so to speak. But if it was a side setback that they're not meeting and you're creating that through the lots bit, split, you're not, we wouldn't approve that because you're creating a non-conformity then. And, you know, there is no practical difficulty for a variance. You're creating that difficulty. So we probably wouldn't entertain that option.
And then Commissioner Thorson.
Thank you. Listening to this, I'm wondering whether the larger issue to ask ourselves is whether we're looking to encourage such redevelopment to create more housing stock? So encourage and facilitate? Or whether we're looking merely to accommodate when it comes along or when we're comfortable with it? Or whether we're looking to restrict us to perhaps too much of a term, but, but prevent undesirable, as some might feel, redevelopment that is more dense? And going into some of these discussions we've had in the past, I felt like we are looking for ways, it seems to me that we're looking for ways to accommodate greater density. Now, not without, you know, limiting quality of life and all those things, but how we can get creative in accommodating these. And I think some of those means we, some of that means we have to look beyond the current restrictions we have and accommodate it where it makes sense. So that's just a question I have in listening to this and thinking about my own perception, which, you know, right now, I, it's quite a, you know, large span. I can see different viewpoints on this. The next point I have is simply that we seem to be, if I'm not mistaken, except for one previous speaker, be thinking about these as on a one-lot basis. And I'm wondering whether the greatest opportunity is going to be whether it's the HRA of the city or whether it's an innovative private developer can pick up one, two or three properties that are adjacent, that are all in need of redevelopment, and that's not unusual to find here in the city. And it doesn't have to be that every single of the three properties, but three willing sellers. And perhaps that's our greatest opportunity, and I think our greatest opportunity to consider alternatives. So if I'm not mistaken, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think the typical lot size in Bloomington is still eighty feet frontage. And that means that if somebody purchases two lots, two substandard lots, that we could get three fifty-foot, you know, wide lots in there that could be designed appropriately so it doesn't seem like we're cramming three homes on there. So I, and alternatively, if somebody picked up four eighty-foot lots, and again, I'm making an assumption that the typical lots are eighty feet, you could do three if we had the restrictions, or four if we had the restriction of sixty feet. So I think we also need to think about this as broader redevelopment, acquisition of homes, and then how we can be creative in accommodating two, three or four homes where it's appropriate because we're hopefully not just thinking about your standard home slapped on the lot in the same way as every other home is. So I think that's an important consideration as well.
With that, I think I kind of have a good sense of where people were. I think I kind of got an informal count of, I think most people were comfortable with the sixty, some wanted to go to that fifty, some maybe more in the seventy. So I think this is good information that I can bring to the council and we'll get their input too. I think they'll have some ideas. So I'll move on to our corner lot minimum. And this is one too where, you'll notice, our minimum lot size is eleven thousand square feet and then we have this corner lot provision. And this is really to accommodate, and I think it was kind of hard to read in this, understand the staff report what I was trying to do. So I have this visual here where, you know, essentially with the corner lot, you have two front yards, right? So you have a thirty-foot setback on the one street and a thirty-foot setback on the other. And using that thirty feet, you know, you get that extra four thousand square feet. It's really, you know, for a hundred and thirty-foot wide lot here, that's thirty-nine hundred square feet. And I think we just rounded to four thousand for simplicity sake. So if we're looking at ways to accommodate a little bit more here or there, there is that option to recognize that really every house has that five-foot setback for their garage. So if you really went to a twenty-five-foot setback, you could actually reduce that slightly. And maybe I'll do a show of hand. Does everyone know how to use your raise hand feature? There's, there should be a button. Who's in support of going for that smaller, that thirty-two fifty as opposed to the, taking with our four thousand at one?
Apologize. Can you repeat the question?
Yeah, if you are, if you support, you know, that smaller, so in this example, if we stuck with our eleven thousand square feet as an example, you would then go to fourteen to fifty as opposed to our fifteen. So just a slightly smaller corner lot. And if you're in support with that, you would raise your hand. Okay. Helpful. Then the next item, similarly for a two-family home standard.
Sorry, Mike. Is there a reason that you didn't go lower than twenty-five on the side?
Not particularly. I just know that that space, you know, when we, we do have lots that are smaller, you do run to that setback issue. I mean, essentially, you have your backyard, right? So that's kind of where it comes into, just providing that extra space. Our lots, they're going to have that setback requirement of thirty feet on that street. So, yeah, not a strong reason, but.
No, it's okay. I would be supportive of even smaller on the side. That's, that's okay where you're at.
Mr. Palermo, I mean. Just wanted to, I have a hard time making any recommendations on these items because I've never, I've never owned a home in a single-family neighborhood and I've never lived in a single-family neighborhood in Bloomington. And so I'm sort of withholding my opinions on these things until I hear more public outreach. And so I don't want my lack of a hand in the previous thing to, that doesn't mean I'm against it. I may find myself in favor of it, but I'm not ready to have opinions until I hear more from the public.
That's understandable. Yep. Thanks for, thanks for speaking up. That's helpful. Appreciate that. And so we're looking at a similar approach with our two-family home. If you think about a two-family home, and this one, we're just kind of recommending, whatever that minimum lot size ends up being, essentially a two-family home is no side yard, right? It's a zero lot line. So just applying, taking away that side yard out of the equation and I could see about twenty-six hundred square feet, you know? So that would be a reduction for, or addition. Anyway, you get what I'm saying with this example. So that's what a two-family home is. So taking that lot, reduce it and then double it, get to your two-family home. So that's what we're recommending. Does anyone have issues with that approach? Does that make sense?
It makes sense, Mr. Palermo. I see what you're saying. There is, the original calculation included the setbacks. And so if we take that out, then that's what you're proposing.
Right. Yep. And then this one, the two-family home approval process, I think we were mostly on board with bringing this back. From, right now it's a planned development that you would seek if you're within five hundred feet of another two-family dwelling on the block, like block face. We were, you know, that adds time. It's technically a rezoning, so it has two public hearings, going to planning commission and going to city council for that planned development overlay. We can step that back and I think people at the last meeting were mostly on board with that. So really, there's two options that we can do to roll that back. One would be kind of a CUP process that would be at planning commission level. So much quicker than having to wait another month then for city council where we have to have a public hearing notice requirements that add that extra three, four weeks to that process. Rolling it back to a CUP would make it fairly quick. Or even if we want to go even further, we can roll it back to just that staff level, a final site and building plan review at the staff level. Maybe, does anyone have any thoughts on this, that they would like to speak to? Commissioner Goldsman.
Yeah, Mr. Palermo, I think one of the comments that I have is, I would be, at least for the beginning, I would be more inclined to go with option one. Just the reason is, I think it's important for us to hear from other residents in the neighborhood and having it go through, the planning commission gives residents notification as well as a voice because it will be impacting them and their neighborhood and where they live and congregate. So I like option one just for that, that effect, even if it is something that would be, you know, more administrative in nature.
A couple had, I can only see three faces on my street at once. So Commissioner Roman.
Thank you. Interestingly, I actually would have the opposite approach of Commissioner Goldsman for probably the same reason that she does. I think this is the type of, you know, a two-family home is, in my opinion, is very different than a multi-family. And, but I do think there is a strong tendency, given we had a discussion, I know, and the planning commission had that long ago, about notice distances, right? And I, you know, I think there's a potential for a strong, not in my backyard contingency to come on on these things. So I think to Commissioner Cookton's point that he's been making is public engagement on what should our standard be? And then once we've had that public engagement on what the standard should be, then I'm more in favor of option two. If we've done our due diligence on getting the public on board with this being the new approach. Because otherwise, we will have hearings and we know how those are, which again, it's great to get the public's input. But I think it, then it becomes, it's one thing if I come and speak out against a nameless auto dealer in my neighborhood. It's another thing if I come and speak out against someone who may be my neighbor for thirty years and that goes through anyways and that just creates a whole different kind of a situation.
Mr. Palermo, this is Chair Solberg again. And I tend to agree more with Commissioner Roman on this one as well. I think one of the things I think about, and of course, I think public engagement will be a good part of this, but if we put a, how should I say this? If we put two-family homes in a scenario where you really are attracting this or asking for neighbors' permission, it starts to put kind of that higher density discussion for the city. In my mind, it starts to say, well, see, this is special and it's not usual business where I think we really want to move it towards one, you know, one home goes in, nobody says anything. If somebody puts a two-family home in and the lot's a little bit bigger and it's, you know, it's mom and dad, or mom and mom, or dad and dad and a kid or two, and what's the difference? The only difference is it's a common wall. And when we talk about that, it's very close in my mind to the additional dwelling units that we've been talking about. And why should it be? Why do we really need to go through that when, I think for all intensive purposes, why would we not allow a conditional use permit for a home if it meets setbacks? I have a hard time with that, not seeing why that wouldn't be just an administrative. Of course, public engagement on the process, that'd be good to know, but I think that has to be part of the consideration in my mind is just how are we trying to convey the use of two-family homes in our neighborhoods?
Yep. Any last thoughts? Otherwise, we could possibly do like, you know, leaning one mayor or another, recognizing that, you know, this would be a good one to really solicit public engagement in. Any other last thoughts? Otherwise, we can do a hand raise for option one. If you're leaning towards option one, raise your hand. Or option two, raise your hand. All right. Now this gets to kind of a media item, the cluster development. So Minneapolis has done quite a, actually quite a bit of work on this. They adopted an ordinance in 2018 that I thought was pretty useful, at least as a starting point that we can alter for Bloomington. Because obviously Minneapolis tends to, like we said, they have forty-foot lots. Their density is much different, much different tolerance than Bloomington might have for something of this nature. But what cluster development, and someone explained it to me really well, that, you know, think of our manufactured home parks just on a smaller scale. Our manufactured home park requires a five-acre site, but imagine maybe a one-acre site or half-acre site and what that difference would be, you know, with a smaller building, a housing unit that's on there. There is a common owner that would own the land and then this really is an affordable housing strategy. There are nonprofits that typically operate. Um, there are, uh, nonprofits that typically operate these. They kind of utilize these for a really affordable, deep, uh, deeply affordable housing unit. Um, so in this case, we would require a conditional use permit. This is similar to Minneapolis. Um, we would have, um, the minimum site size requirements, which we'll talk about. Um, maybe what we think would be a starting point if this is something, um, I know this was one of those people are a little bit on the fence with. Um, um, but we would require buildings to meet that front setback. Um, no reason why we wouldn't continue to do that. Um, but maybe a little less on the, the, um, rear setback. We have a, you know, thirty-foot rear setback, but, um, and then, um, limitation on dwelling units. Um, Minneapolis has, they, they can't have two, more than two dwelling units in a structure. Um, which I thought works. Um, I'm not sure that we would even get more than just one dwelling unit in a structure. Um, minimum building occupancy requirements is subject to building code. We would just follow the building code on what that occupancy requirement is. We don't need to get into that. Um, it would be a management plan. Like I said, there's usually a common owner, um, for these that, uh, manage, manager for this. Um, um, and they would have things like where people sleeping is, emergency exits, uh, all sorts of different things. Um, crime prevention strategies through the environmental design. Um, so desire of the property that would encourage, uh, crime prevention. And then having storage, we talked about storage a lot, um, but that, that's important with something like this. So with that, uh, Commissioner Cookton, I saw you raised your hand.
Uh, Mr. Palermo, thank you. Um, just to clarify, cluster development, is that the idea that these would be owner-occupied units and not renter-occupied? Or is that not true?
Uh, they would likely not, well, there's different models. It could potentially be that you own the unit and not the land, kind of like, um, like a manufactured home park. You're leasing the land under your, your unit. Um, but not, it could also just be that you're, you're, it's a renter occupied.
You can tell me to knock it off and not answer this question. Um, was, was the consideration of just crafting it more like apartments, um, a renter, a, a, a bunch of rented units next to each other? Sounds like apartments.
Um, it, it, it is. Um, there are, um, there are some advantages to doing, developing like this versus a typical apartment. Um, and that's really where we would talk about what is that acceptable number of, uh, units that we would allow, you know? Uh, uh, typically with the, an apartment, we, we, we might not allow that level of, uh, density. So that, that is part of the discussion. I think that, that's important. Um, if that makes sense, we would.
Um, may, if I may ask a question, are apartments allowed in R1?
Uh, they are not.
So I guess without getting too deep into the merits of cluster development or not, or whatever, uh, I'm having a little hard time computing the difference between apartments and clusters housing. And maybe that means we should allow apartments in R1, or maybe that means we shouldn't allow clusters in R1. I don't really know where I'm at. I, I don't mean to open up a whole new can of worms here, and I think I should just let you continue.
No, I think those are, that's a valid point. I, I think that is. I mean, this would definitely be something very new and different. And yeah, and this is definitely one of those we'll be going through, public engagement. And, um.
Mr. Palermo, this is Chair Lewis.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I have a question, just trying to get my head around the cluster development. Would this be something used, um, and I've seen, I've seen this in Minneapolis, um, like for homeless veterans and that kind of thing? I see this as sort of, um, possibly a solution for homeless, for some of our homeless and, and people who are facing, um, you know, difficulty, uh, having a home. Is that more what the cluster development is used for? Because when I see that in that use, I, I, I would, you know, I think it's a good idea. Where an apartment might not be appropriate.
That is a lot. That is a lot of, um, these, these models are usually homeless veterans that are, you know, transitioning into that more stable housing. You know, as we said, with those health factors, you know, stable housing is an important part of establishing a healthy life, lifestyle. Um, the social determinants of health and part of that, you know, differences in apartment, you can see here on this image, you know, you have a little front area for a garden, something the ownership of that, um, you don't necessarily always have with an apartment. So, yeah.
Thank you.
That's bottom.
Yeah, for clarifying that. Because when I look at it that way, um, I think cluster val- cluster developments are something that we should at least be open to. So thank you.
Yeah, and so that's the benefit, you know, it's helping, um, populations have that stable housing, access those benefits. Um, it is more affordable housing options for, you know, meeting different needs for different people. Um, you know, it's a high utilization of land. Um, but there are, it's not without other impacts. There are more people living there, higher traffic. Um, it is density, more activity than potentially in a, a single-family neighborhood would have. You know, there's visitors on site potentially and, um, and you do have that potential for higher turnover of residents. Um, that potential does exist. Um. So this is kind of a big question, would be utilize our minimum lot size standard? You know, we still have this impervious surface that would be applicable. Um, or would we require a larger lot, like an acre? The mo- the manufactured home, I said, starts at five acres. So that, that's a pretty substantial size, you know, to acquire. Whereas, um, as we were talking about with just the redevelopment potential, the more lots you have to acquire, the more difficult it is to, to do. Um, anyone have any thoughts on a minimum lot size?
This is Chair Solberg. Um, I guess I, I thinking a little bit about, um, what Commissioner Cookton said as well, um, and trying to, give some guidance without really knowing what the standards are. Um, I don't know why we would necessarily require a larger lot. Um, I think a big part of it depends upon, um, well, and it, again, go back to our standard eighty by, uh, whatever, one thirty, eh, how many, um, units would be allowed? Uh, what sort of amenities are around? Is it around high-density, uh, high-traffic transit? Or is it in the middle of, um, you know, I, uh, single-family homes in the middle of the city with, uh, no amenities around? I think that you get different thoughts on, on how that could work, so. Um, but I think just initially to think about it and allowing at least the idea to continue to be, um, developed, whether it moves forward or not, I, I don't know why you would require a larger lot. It would be more about maybe the number of units you would require on any given property. Size, whatever. So, thank you.
And you would, and this would be a conditional use permit, which would give you that extra discretion to look into some of those mitigating factors. Any other thought? Uh, which, um, I think your board members, are the HRA's board members, sorry, board member hooking?
Thank you. Um, I agree with the, I, with what, um, Chair, um, had said there about the lot size. Like, I don't see why that would matter. It would be more that, with that conditional use permit of how many we would allow on a specific lot size. Um, as I stated in our last meeting, I'm a big supporter of this, um, just because it's, it's, um, progressive and multi, and, and, and affects multi-generations. Um, this is, I've seen this used in other states and other counties and, and things like that. And, and seeing how multi-generations go to these, these clusters together. And so you have a younger generation with an older generation, you have homeless mixed with, you know, the working class. And I just think it's, it, it integrates community and it's exactly what I think Bloomington is, is talking about inclusiveness and all that. I think that that's really part of our, you know, fundamentals. And I just, I would really like this real, the, and I said this at the last meeting, this really excites me that you guys went here and went to this. Cause I think this is really forward-thinking and I think it's something we really need to look at going forward. But I think lot size-wise, I don't think that, again, with that conditional use permit, I think that it just depends on how many are on a lot. But, so thank you for this hard work on this. I really do appreciate that.
Yeah, and I think this kind of might relate to Commissioner Cookton's comments earlier. It's hard to know, you know, I don't think any of us have lived in a situation like this. Um, I'm making that assumption. Um, but, so it's hard to really know and visualize. Um, so it sounds like more limiting the residence per acre might be a better option on how we address that. Um. And I think, I think I've seen some head nods of people are, we should provide some sort of maximum per acre to kind of create that constraint. And then this is another one to, um, you know, looking at parking. Um, some of these, they don't have any parking. I think Minneapolis doesn't require any parking. Um, well, they require bike parking, um, but they, no, uh, vehicle parking. So I, I don't think Bloomington, as we've discussed, um, this kind of will lead into our discussion too. It's, it's still fairly car-dependent. Um, but we do have other parking standards that are different than our single-family. So for manufactured home park, we require two spaces per unit. Um, congregate living, we only require one space per bedroom. Um, anyone have any strong opinions on this? Or maybe this is something we can, uh, um, get to a later date?
I think this one, again, uh, Chair Solberg here, again, really depends upon how close you are to transit or other options. And not that everybody uses transit that might live in this facility. They, you know, it, if they're working somewhere on the other side of the city that's not, uh, accessible, uh, that they, they may need the car. Um, but this is one of those that, um, w- we got an awful lot of space on our city streets and, and I get we have an occasional, uh, snow emergency. But maybe that's, um, we can allow something, parking on one side one day. Or, you know, we can make other, uh, uh, things available, uh, to make this so that we're not requiring parking spaces, uh, in front of these, uh, facilities that might very well sit empty. Or I can imagine as a conditional use comes forward and you're again in a, maybe a residential neighborhood. That's, and I'm gonna have to sit and look at five cars in front of me, which they may never see. So.
Yep. Any other thoughts? So that leads into our, these were kind of items that we, I didn't have quite as strong of direction in, that we kind of talked about at the last meeting. Um, but hopefully to get a little more firm on a recommendation. So we talked about the two-car garage requirement, um, and minimum parking requirement. You know, for a single-family and two-family require four spaces per unit, two of which fully enclosed. Um, and carports are not considered fully enclosed. Um, this kind of relates back to, um, impervious surface. You know, we talked about this a little bit earlier with the smaller lot size. What does that mean? If you have two parking spots, um, you add another two hundred square feet for second stall in your garage, another three hundred square feet for a driveway, you, you're adding impervious surface, you know, five hundred square feet, um, right there. And as we're, these two are kind of converging, um, so something to consider. This right here is the example of the, in Bloomington, that's a ten forty Rambler that has single-car garage and a single driveway. Um, so really, I mean, we've talked about before, you know, the advantages of having, um, some storage. You know, people don't always park in their garage, so having that outside space, parking spot is helpful. Um, sometimes they just utilize their garage for storage. If we don't have that stored, sometimes it spills out into, uh, you know, like outside exterior and, you know, then it comes an enforcement issue for, you know, people storing stuff. Um, so really, we kind of saw a couple of options here to kind of move forward. One is no change, just keep the option. Um, reduce our requirement, uh, to one-car garage, um, and have that kind of one parking spot. You know, that's built in with our setback or reduce, um, maybe reduce that requirement, but we have a requirement that you have space for expansion. Um, so maybe you're not building it up front, but you have that ability to add on later when you need it. Um, or maybe it's kind of some middle ground where you have, uh, a one-and-a-half-car garage. So recognizing that people still need storage space and it kind of at least provides that extra storage space in the garage. Um, we would probably utilize some kind of minimum, you know, width or standard to create that kind of car and a half. So you have a half-car space for storing all your bikes or other items. Does anyone have any thoughts on which one makes sense to them?
Mr. Palermo, it's, uh, Chair Solberg again. Could, could we do something more along the lines of a proof of garage parking? Which is not require it, but it's there for future? If, um, a property owner wanted to build it after, I mean, cause again, right, cars built in the last twenty years generally start pretty well in the cold compared to nineteen fifty-three when a lot of our houses were built.
Yep.
That's all.
I think that's number two, right? Option two?
Yep, um, we would, option two was to still have, have like a one-car garage, um, but provide for that second stall. But I think Solb- Commissioner Chair Solberg, you were kind of leaning towards not even having a garage necessarily, but area for a garage.
Yeah, m- m- more along the lines of, if we're, if we're looking at affordability, a garage is, is really a convenience. Um, it's not a require, and part, part of why I brought up vehicles are more reliable. Um, now it does run the gamut of homes that maybe are affordable. Everybody may look, well, it doesn't have a garage. That's one of the affordable houses. So it could run a stigma.
Right.
Um, which, not interested in that either, but just some different ideas that, is it really required? Or is that something that developer or city or whoever's building, um, could provide? And, and only because you started racking up these, these, uh, square footages and it gets to a third of a lot pretty quick.
Right. Uh, Commissioner Hooking?
Thanks. Um, for someone in Bloomington that has a one-car garage, a one-car garage is just fine. Um, I don't think that you have to have a two-car. Uh, I agree, it does also increase the price. So it does kind of get that affordable.
Get that affordability point too, so I'm fine with just a one car, um, we have a driveway that can sup, you know, suffice for the rest of it, so.
Any other input? Oh, Commissioner Thorson, sorry.
Thank you, I I lived in my home for twenty some years with a one car garage. And uh it is very workable, ultimately, um, I changed that, uh, but um, I think it's very workable. It provides for one space for a vehicle, we would often figure out who had to go to work and on the evening of the first. Morning after a snowstorm and that person got the garage and worked around it. Uh, uh, but again, we're talking about affordability, we're talking about. Uh, reducing requirements so that we can help make things more afford a bit affordable, and I think the one car is a good compromise.
Any other thoughts? Okay, I think this might be my last item is prevailing setback and I don't think we we didn't get to this in the last meeting. Um, this was kind of in that operational efficiency section, this is something that, um, we require, um. Homes that are next to uh existing homes that were built before nineteen seventy-four, October seventh nineteen seventy-four. Um, that you you we have this prevailing setback, essentially. You uh have to meet the average of the two abutting homes, um, here allow it a five foot, um. Uh, uh leeway that you can get a little bit closer, um. But, you know, it's it's something we have to calculate, it's not too hard to calculate, but it is another step. And often requires a survey to ma- confirm the neighbors sometimes if you are looking. There is some kind of, this is kind of the example, just trying to find one in Bloom, the existing, but, um. You know, it's finding a needle in a haystack with their thirty thousand, single family lots, so essentially, here's your. Existing home, here's another one that just happens to be set back further and here's another one in the same block face. Well, this one would have to be kind of in the middle, um, and essentially you get a a smaller backyard. Because this person's house happened to be back further. Um, so, you know, there is that issue that it's applied to properties before nineteen seventy-four, not all our properties. Um, so one option would be to apply it just universally, um. The other would be to extend that out, so part of the issue is that we just do the budding lots. Well, if the rest of those blocks on that face are also at thirty feet. Then if you took that average out over, you know, a hundred feet, then it's not an issue. You really are keeping with that neighborhood character and it's not uncommon to do that. I've worked for cities that do that, that would. Take the rest of the houses on the block and come up with the block average, um, so that would be one way to prevent that issue. Where you have that one off house that just happened to be set back further. Um, or the third option, um, would be just utilize one standard, thirty feet is kind of our standard. If you don't hit that nineteen seventy-four threshold, um. It, you know, it's simple, it's clear, it's thirty feet, potentially can change that if we need to, but I think thirty feet is kind of where we've set on. Or option four would be not to change it, you know, it's not a huge issue, it's not a big barrier, um, but it is something that kind of comes up from time to time. Anyone have any thoughts they want to share? Probably not something you've encountered much. Um, do we want to just kind of raise your hand for options, I'll go to option one, two, three, or four, and you can raise your hand. Um, those who would prefer option one could raise their hand. Option two, you can raise your hand, let's uh. Extend that out further, keep neighborhood character. Uh, option three, just utilize one straight standard. And then just no change. All right, well, that is what I had for, oh, nope, I had one more home, sorry about that. Minimal home standard or home size, this is another one, we didn't quite, um. We saw it both ways, um, I think the ten forty is not overly onerous. It's it's doable, most homes are meeting that minimum standard anyway. Um, one thing to note, we we used to have this, uh, and one clarity, point clarity is it's not footprint, it's total. Square footage, so it could be second floor, could be finished basement, um, previously. Um, up until a few years ago, we changed it, um, it was actually a footprint, not including the garage. Um, this ten forty would be kind of livable area in the total house, so regardless of floor. Um, the garage wouldn't be included in that ten forty number, um, but second floors and finished basements would be. Um, I guess maybe, does anyone want to have a strong opinion on reducing that? Uh, more number sources? Yeah, Commissioner Thorson?
Um, I guess I would be inclined again when we're looking at increasing affordability. In reducing uh the minimum size for single family. Whether that's nine hundred and sixty square feet or something else, um, I, again, it's not onerous, the thousand forty. But again, there are costs involved with every square foot and, um. With smaller family sizes today and and uh in some ways better. Design of homes to make them more open and flexible, um, I think we should consider a smaller, um, minimum size.
Any thought on what that number would be?
I guess my question would be, do we need a number?
Yep.
Okay, that may be, that would be my question is, you know, do we need a minimum?
Uh, a valid point.
Mister Palermo, this is Chair Solberg, I'm just thinking to what, uh, Commissioner Roma just said, I'm assuming this, if cluster. Uh, development went through, that this would not apply to those?
Right, those would be kind of a, that's a kind of a separate development matter, you know, that would fall outside the realm of this, yeah.
And so, uh, maybe back to that, like, if we're okay in that scenario. Um, because it's affordable and it helps people move, um, into more stable conditions. I, I, I don't feel like I sit here and say, well, you have to have a nine hundred and sixty square foot home. If if you can afford a five hundred square foot home and that's what you can and you're in there and you love it, hey, more power to you, but. Um, cause I don't know what it, it detracts, what it pulls away from. Um, to have a smaller home. So, um, yeah, I don't, I don't know what a right number is, if there is one.
Alright, that was the last one, so like I said, I'll be bringing that to council, um, we'll be doing public outreach. So I'll be, um, talking more with developers, um, they were kind of on board with a lot of what we were talking about. Um, I think this kind of fits with what, um, the couple that I talked to, um, so yeah. I know it's getting late, so I'll move on to my next item. Multi-family parking, so this one I'll kind of go a little more quickly, um, probably a little less discussion on some of these. But so hopefully it'll be a little more straightforward, but, um, you know, we. We were reviewing our multi-family parking standard, um, kind of a couple of different calls with that review is once just simplify what that standard is. Um, make it easy and easy to calculate, um, you know, right size our approach, understanding that. Most of our projects have some sort of flexibility or reduction in minimum parking. Um, but and also continue to provide flexibility, you know, we want to simplify it, but we also want to understand that different circumstances have different needs. So our existing code, we are, we do a per bedroom uh calculation. So for one bedroom units, get one point eight spaces per dwelling unit, um, two bedrooms are two point two, three bedroom has. Uh, two point six spaces and I don't think we have any four bedrooms in Bloomington, uh, right now. Just getting cut off for some reason, apologize, um.
Yeah, it is.
But we also have, um, a party room requirement, I wonder if I do. We have a party room requirement, um, which is. Unique, uh, I think it's gonna do it again, but, uh, it's unique to Bloomington, uh, but one space for every hundred square feet. Uh, party room or a common room, uh, area. We also have, like I mentioned, flexibility in our code, opportunity housing origins, we have all become familiar with. Um, for affordable housing units, depending on the level of affordability or the number of affordable units. Um, you can get reductions in that, uh, parking requirement. Uh, furthermore, if you're in a designated transit area, that's what CTA stands for, you can, uh, access even more reduction. Um, but we have other flexibility measures that people utilize, proof of parking, so you don't actually have to build it. But you have, provide that space if later that demand warrants it. Um, shared parking, maybe you're next to an office building or a complimentary use, you know, where people are at home usually typically in the. Typically, outside of a pandemic in the evening, um, and going to the office during the day or, you know. You share parking, understanding that you have different peak demands. Uh, travel demand management plans, these are plans that are kind of where the managers. Property managers do things to encourage transit use and other, um, mitigation essentially to reduce that parking requirement. Could be through, um, transit, uh, pass reductions or other, um, items. And then enhance leakages to mass transit, um, and you can see many of these require a parking study. The same with the, if you get planned development overlay, um, you can get a reduction. But these require kind of a transportation study, parking study to really confirm that you're not gonna have that negative impact. Uh, so the first goal, you know, simplify the code, um, it's not complicated necessarily to calculate. Um, with that bedroom count, uh, it is, you know, more precise, it's understanding that the more bedrooms you have. The more likelihood you have people who are driving, um, but it can impact design. So it's not hard necessarily to calculate, but we know that even up to planning commissioner, city council, you know, we're talking about potential changes. And changes might unit mix, maybe they are moving, maybe they can squeeze a couple more one bedrooms or two bedrooms in and then that changes the parking calculation. So it can, it can be impactful, we have that happen where sometimes it changes last minute and. So doing a per unit might be more helpful, um, in kind of, in that design work. Um, it's pretty uncommon in the metro recent region, um, you know, it's not unique, you know, some cities do this. Shakopee has a per bedroom, but our twelve cities that I look at usually proximity and similarity. Um, Shakopee was the only one that had that, most use, every other one uses a per unit requirement. But what is unique to Bloomington is our party room requirement, some, you know, the point of the party room requirement is understanding that. That's utilized for kind of parties and that means outside guests coming, um, and to accommodate those extra guests. Um, some communities, they have a required guest parking, um, but. A lot of times it's just baked into what that demand is, you know, understanding that sometimes you'll get peaks here and there, but overall that. Demand isn't, it's kind of incorporated in that base number. So one of the things we're recommending is to move to that per unit ratio, be consistent with other, other metro communities. Um, like I said, it's a little bit easier to design, it is less precise, so you do have kind of the issue with if you have a lot of. One bedrooms, you might be having slightly more parking than if you have, you know, a lot of larger bedrooms. You might have slightly less parking than maybe need, so it is that little less precise. Um, but overall, it, you know, it doesn't seem to be a huge issue with most communities using this standard. Um, does anyone have any issues with this approach or want to comment on this? Moving to that per unit ratio rather than the per bedroom ratio?
Mister Palermo, Chair Solberg here again, so you said i- it's not, right, it's not quite as, uh, precise as what we currently use. Um, for the unit ratio, for the unit ratio. Um.
Yep.
Do, uh, like, uh, I think, was it Shakopee you said? Uh, do they use the same as us or was that the, um, sorry, was that the party room?
Um, no, they, they do, Shakopee does a little bit less than us. Um, one point five spaces per one bedroom, two and two point five, so they're, they're a little bit less than us.
And maybe the question that I'm trying to get to is, if it's, it's not as precise and it disadvantages some of those smaller units. And just thinking that we went back and we, we just created that, the new housing units, the, they were all a bunch of single. Uh, unit facilities and does that create, and thinking along the lines of sustainability within the city and. Um, are we, by going to this while simplified, also then creating more sustainability issues? By creating more pavement out there in the future than we really think necessary? Um, I'd, I'd rather err on the side of proof of parking than, um. Than having too much out there, cause you know it's never gonna get taken out and then you're dealing with more hotspots and. More impervious surface, more runoff and everything else that's associated with it, so.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm might, um, just push back that it's not gonna be a huge difference between, you know. Uh, you're, you're thinking, I'm just trying to think of a quick example, if we have a two hundred unit, uh, building and. Right now, we have a difference of, uh, point four spaces and there's shifting. You know, part of it is just honing in on that number that's gonna be more adequate, I mean. And the reality is, most of our projects are one and two bedrooms, so it, the, it's. It's not gonna be a huge shift, but there is differences, I think we want to acknowledge that there is a difference and. Um, you know, we don't get, we might get more three bedroom units, um. That it could advantage them, you know, right now we would require more for a three bedroom unit. And and if we get more three bedroom units, this would be better, so maybe it ends up being a wash or, you know. It, it, I would say it's probably not a huge difference, but it is there.
Do those other communities, um, see an excess of parking?
Uh, I don't believe so, um, and I'll, I'll talk about in the next slide, I went out and did parking codes here to see kind of what our actual parking. But, uh, Commissioner Cookton, I'll, I see your hands raised.
Uh, thank you, Mister Palermo, um, I have a thought and I'm having a little hard time connecting the dots, I'm hoping maybe you can connect the dots for me. So if we take away the party room thing and we do it by a per unit basis. Then those spots effectively then are for the residents and not for guests. Um, most of the new multi-family development we see has secure and non-secure parking. Does that mean we're gonna, like, do I have to worry about we run into a situation now where all of the built parking is secure? And there's no guest parking, which causes other problems?
Uh. Not necessarily, um, so while we have this requirement, uh, for additional parking, we do not actually have a. Um, so while we have this requirement, uh, for additional parking, we do not actually have a requirement for guest parking, that it be posted for guest parking. Um, so it, it does become a management issue, um, and not something that our code necessarily addresses. So that's where just understanding that, you know, you bake in that base number slightly larger to accommodate more guests. Understanding that you'll have guests going to the facility, does that make sense?
Yeah, I think so, thanks.
Some communities do have a requirement to sign a certain percentage for guest parking. Um, I think Brooklyn Park is one and, um, remember, in Burnsville, so. Any thoughts on the moving to a per, any, why am I phrasing it this way, any issues with moving to a per unit ratio? Commissioner Goldsman?
Yeah, thanks. Um, one question I have is currently we have a lot of requests for deviations on parking. And so just looking for staff's feedback on if we move to a per unit ratio, would that cause more deviation requests? Or would it actually ease that?
It's a good question, that kind of leads into the next section, which is what that number would be. Um, so I think that's, that, that's kind of the, the point, we need to have that right number, right? Uh, would we have more deviations or what level would those deviations be, um, that we'd be comfortable with? Um, so, um, I'll just kind of use that as a good segue into next section. So on average, what's been approved for the last 10 years, um, looking at actual requirement to come up with that per unit. We, we've required a 2.0 spaces per unit, um, which it makes sense, 1.8 is our one bedroom and 2.2 is in the middle there. Um, the approved rate for these projects in the last 10 years is actually 1.6, so a 20% reduction. Um, there were three code complying projects in the last 10 years, um, that didn't receive a deviation, but most received some sort of deviation. And since the OHO has been in place since 2019, it's been closer to actually 1.4 on what's been approved. So closer to a 30% reduction, um, you know, that's baked into the OHO. So that's something we'll talk about a little bit later too, is how do we adjust those if we, as we adjust our number? So I have this in here, um, because, you know, it's really across the board on what different cities require. Brooklyn Park was one, one of the higher ones with 2.5. Um, Shakopee had that similar approach to us, but still a little bit less than we do. Savage across the river is 2.5, um, Edina, I have an asterisk here because at 1.7 is for mixed use, so they can get a little bit lower. And in fact, it, they're in the process of studying their requirements too for lowering that. So I suspect they'll probably get a little bit lower than they are today. Um, and you know, most of, the difficult part with this comparison is most of these communities have similar, similar flexibility measures with us. You know, we require this bedroom count, but in reality we're at 1.6, right? So, so what that actual number compared to their code is really hard to determine. But when we're looking from our code perspective, we wouldn't be out of the line, out of line to, for lowering it. So getting into practice, um, like I said, pre-OHO was closer to 1.75, so a little bit higher. Um, but post-OHO is 1.4, um, or 1.4, so it gets to that 1.6 average over the last 10 years. Um, and I went out to several properties, um, and did parking counts. And that initial, uh, night that I went out, we had, we're probably closer to man for about 1.4 or five spaces. Um, one of the buildings I went to, they mentioned, you know, this was a good time of year to kind of do these counts. Cause he said it snowed, once that first snow hits, then everyone wants the garage space. So you can kind of assume that that garage space is mostly filled up. Um, some of our projects, we know that they, the garage space is included, um, and some have provided what that garage utilization is. Um, and really from the, the properties that is able to do parking counts that we were really closer to that 1.5 spaces per unit. Now, we wouldn't necessarily want to go to that level. Um, uh, I'm recommending here 1.8. So part of why we don't want to go to 1.4 or 5 is that, that's what I, what I saw. Now, we want some little bit of that buffer room, one for guests and understanding that that's a point in time. I plan to go out and do some more parking counts just to confirm that. Um, but talking with property managers, that seems to be about what the rate is. Um, but you want to, people do perceive a full lot, even if there are spaces open. So they say about 90, 95% full, people will perceive it as 100% full and won't be able to find their spot. So you want to build in that extra kind of parking, um, just understanding that. And then, um, but again, it is our existing demand versus future demand as we think maybe Bloomington develops more. High frequency transit, uh, becomes more ride hail, becomes more popular, other factors that might reduce our total parking demand. So taking that into factor and understanding that we have these flexibility options, um, and, um, the OHO. So the OHO is the, the big one where these are kind of more baked in. So understanding that we reduce, if we reduce our number, it can influence how affordable housing projects that we get. You know, if it is less of a barrier, um, you might see some more fee and loo projects if they find that, um, you know, less expense, parking is a, a major expense. So, um, they don't need, if it, there's less parking requirement, there's, um, less cost associated with that parking. They might find that fee and loo option more attractive, uh, and that is a bigger policy discussion, maybe we want that money or not. Um, so we might see more of that option. Um, I, you can see here, I'm recommending keeping our covered parking requirement. So this is not uncommon, most of cities, not most, most of cities, you know, have a park, covered parking requirement. Um, usually it's one space per unit, a few don't, St. Louis Park, Golden Valley, um, Shakopee, for example. But, um, you know, we do have these flexibility measures in the opportunity housing ordinance to reduce that requirement. Uh, window flats went a little bit lower than that, um, so that is another kind of tool, um, where you can reduce that number if needed. But it is really highly utilized, talking to the met, it is one of these things where you talk to the management company versus the, the developer. The developer obviously would like to not have that covered parking requirement because it's more costly to develop. But the management company loved it because people really utilize the garage, it's great, you know, to have a spot to put not only your vehicle. Most of these spaces now have a bike rack in there and viewing the couple of garages that I got to go see, the bike racks were filled up. So the spots put your bike or other couple of, you know, belongings there, a little extra storage. Um, so it's highly utilizing, Minnesota winter, there is, you know, there's something nice to that, having that space. Um, so, and it's not much of a barrier, uh, if we do get those fee and loo projects. Most people that have a market rate building has some sort of, um, uh, cost for renting out those excess spaces or spaces that they have. So there are ways that they capture that money back in. Um, so, so I'm not recommending changing the covered parking ratio at this time. And it came to that 1.8 spaces, recognizing that that's kind of our lower end for the, the one unit. Um, and knowing that we have these other flexibility measures, um, and not going too far to the spot where we're not having enough parking. So that was a lot, um, do people have any thoughts on that number, uh, Commissioner Cookton?
Uh, Mr. Palermo, thank you. Um, I'm happy to see this come up, it's something I've been anxious to see for us for a while. Um, we are overparked, uh, and by supplied, we are oversupplied in the city of Bloomington on parking. We, we require too much, like he was in the staff report noted that almost 100% of recent applications that ask for deviation. And so that, that's very clear to us that we are providing too much parking. And if you are really nice and attentive and looked over my shoulder here, you'd see an empty parking ramp across the street that is never full on the top. Because we've, we've asked for too much parking and so I'm big time in favor of reducing this. Um, I also think it helps accomplish sustainability goals. Um, Chair Solberg probably knows this as well as I do, that cement is terrible for the environment. It's one of the worst, uh, polluters of the, the construction industry. Uh, the development industry is very aware of it, we're trying to do the best we can. And the best way to not, to not pollute is to not use it, right? So, uh, getting rid of some of that parking is also good to accomplish sustainability goals. I do think we need to be careful, uh, especially in particular locations where there is no on-street parking. And so we gotta be, you know, and maybe it's, I was trying to think a little bit, could we be more aggressive in some areas than the others? My concern is, you know, Normandale Lake Office Park, Bloomington Central Station, there is zero on-street parking, it doesn't exist. So if you don't have a spot, you do not have a spot. And so we gotta be really careful about that. But if I was at, you know, Old Shakopee in France and they ran out of parking, I'd just park on the street somewhere. And so maybe it's the development districts are a little bit more cautious about, uh, being aggressive with the parking reduction. But outside of those development districts, you're a little more aggressive and they'll find a street spot, I don't know, but those are my thoughts.
Any other thought?
This is Chair Solberg, I, I tend to agree with Commissioner Cookton. Um, I'd also agree here, if we're saying on single family homes, we're, I think we generally agreed that one parking spot, one covered parking spot would be okay. I think we're, we're still good with that, with, uh, these types of facilities. Um, yeah, I, I, Commissioner Cookton's right, we, we have a ton of parking that goes unutilized. Uh, but I think we gotta look at it strategically and, and where we, where we require it and really, uh, but then the other side of me goes, well, if the developers say that's the number and people move into a facility knowing that's the number, um, maybe that's okay? I don't know, so I'll leave my comments at that.
I will add, um, you know, with the parking count, I'll go out and do another one and kind of get more data. But, um, there, there's a couple of factors, one, if you build it, people will use, use it, right? It will come unless you have too mu, way too much, um, and that, but if you're constraining, people will find a way to make that work. Um, but also, um, we have a lot of new projects, right, under the OHO. Uh, the first project with Windell Flats, that has just opened. Um, so we don't have data on those new that had, you know, much lower or higher deviation. So this could be a starting point and as we get more of that, those projects on mind that have a deeper deviation, we can really kind of confirm what, and hone in on that number as we move forward, as we see those projects, it will be interesting.
That might be a good way to step into it.
And then, I, I kind of talked about this before, um, we do have the opportunity housing ordinance, which has these kind of numbers baked in. Um, we would adjust these appropriately, um, we kind of add that 50% number, if you think 2.0 was kind of what we were approving and 50% gets you that one space per unit. Um, so kind of adjust those as we kind of, um, appropriately. But also thinking about, um, our transit, you know, we just had the orange line open in December, the D-line is under construction. These are bus rapid transit routes that are, um, they operate, I think the orange line is 24/7, um, at a frequent amount, you know, 30 minutes, 15 minutes during the day. Um, so frequent enough that you can potentially see replacing a car with that. Um, we have our LRT line too in the South Loop District, um. Uh, so understanding that we have these, may, to me, it made sense to add kind of a distinction between high frequency transit, which we already kind of know has regular service, um, I think it's every, at least every hour, um, weekdays and some, uh, weekend service. And understanding that these operate much more frequently and are at six stations, so the stations aren't moving. As with the bus stop, that kind of, this changes a little bit here and there. And as Metro Transit is adjusting their routes in the near future, this designated transit area may shift. Um, but knowing that the orange line, the D-line and the blue line, they're, they're fixed, they've got physical stations in the ground. Um, that it would make sense to acknowledge that this is where we would, um, want to encourage that more density and move away from that car dependency. Um, anyone have any thoughts on that? Adding kind of a second tier that would fall kind of in the middle there between what that high end is and what that, you know, without the designated transit area?
Yeah, I think, um, in your pink spots, your station areas, yes, I think, um, I'll be a little bit blunt on this. Metro Transit's been a little bit of an unreliable partner in the orange areas. So to make permanent, uh, development concessions in an area where we have not been able to rely on, uh, stable transit. I, I would be comfortable in the pink areas, I would be less comfortable in the orange.
I think you're getting some head nods on that as well.
That is what I had for tonight, I, thanks for listening to me for quite a while here. Um, but like this will go to a study session as well with council, just to get their, they'll give probably a similar presentation. And once we get their confirmation, we'll kind of bring it back for an ordinance shortly after that. Um, like I said, I'll probably do a couple more traffic counts just to make sure that these numbers, um, uh, make sense. But, um, we've been talking with developer, developers and with the property managers and they, they, they agree, we, we have some movement that could be made.
All right, thank you, Mr. Palermo, appreciate that tonight. And, uh, with that, that concludes item number three, uh, for the joint study meeting and I will turn it over to Chair Lewis.
Thank you, and, uh, to my two commissioners that are still out there. Um, rather than asking for a formal, uh, motion to adjourn, I'm just going to ask for that we adjourn. And I will just do a real quick roll call vote, if you would like to adjourn, Commissioner Thorson.
Yes. Hi.
Well, um, I will, I am going to vote yes, that we adjourn and I'm assuming that Commissioner Hooking would agree with us.
Yeah, I hear you.
There she went on.
There we are, Commissioner Hooking, I'm asking for your vote to adjourn.
Chair Lewis, I can't hear you, but I'm going to say aye.
Aye, that's good, that was good, good, all right, the meeting is adjourned, thank you.
All right, so the meeting is adjourned for HRA, thank you. All right, uh, for Planning Commission, we have, uh, two items here left in front of us. And that's, uh, the first one being consider approval of the draft Planning Commission synopsis. And I would just like to, um, note that the, uh, motion in the packet is for October 14th, December 2nd and December 16th. Uh, Planning Commission synopsis and for those, uh, that are wondering on October 14th, Commissioner Corman and Commissioner Albrecht were absent on December 2nd. All were in attendance and December 16th, Commissioner Albrecht, uh, was absent as well. Uh, with that, commission members, I would, uh, make a motion to move the draft Planning Commission meeting synopsis of October 14th, 2nd and December 16th, 21, 2021 is presented. Um, oh, it does want a separate motion, darn, you, you got me on that one, uh, uh, Mr. Markergard. So I will, I will move for the, the October 14th Planning Commission synopsis as presented, is there a second? Commissioner Goldsman? Commissioner Goldsman?
Aye.
All right. Commission members, we have a motion and a second in front of us to approve the draft planning commission synopsis for the October 14th, 2021 planning commission as presented. All, uh, any discussion? Not seeing any? All those in favor say aye by roll call. Commissioner Goldsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Roman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
I think she's left.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, she did email me, she had to leave for the evening.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
And Commissioner Cookton?
Aye.
And aye for myself, motion passes. All right, does somebody want to make motion for December 2nd?
So moved to approve.
All right, we got a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second from Commissioner Goldsman. Commission members, we have a motion to approve the dra, draft planning commission synopsis of December 2nd, 2021 is presented. Any further discussion on that? Not seeing any? All those in favor say aye by roll call. Commissioner Goldsman?
Aye.
Commissioner, uh, Roman?
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookton?
Aye.
And aye for myself, motion passed. Does somebody want to make a, a motion to approve the draft planning commission synopsis for December 16th?
So moved.
All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Cookton. Is there a second? All right, we got a second by Commissioner Roman. All right, commission members, we have a motion to approve the draft planning commission meeting synopsis of December 16th, 2021 is presented. Any further discussion? Not seeing any? All those in favor say aye by roll call. Commissioner Goldsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Roman?
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookton?
Aye.
An aye for myself, motion passes. All right, moving on to item number five, planning commission policy and issues updates. Mr. Markergard?
Sure. Mr. Chairman Commissioners, I want to start by introducing you to our newest staff member, Kevin Toski is here. He's been, uh, with us all evening tonight. He's, uh, was hired on Monday as assistant city attorney and, uh, he's taking the spot most recently occupied by Megan Rogers, uh, who you've worked with a lot and you'll be working in the future a lot with, uh, Mr. Toski. Uh, he comes most recently from the League of Minnesota Cities and, uh, I'll let Kevin say a few words.
Yeah, good evening Chair and Commissioners. My name's Kevin Toski. Like Glenn said, I, uh, been at the league for the last four years. I just started this week, uh, living in Lino Lakes with my family, um, looking forward to working with staff and, um, working with the commission on its, uh, business. So still learning how all this works, this is my first meeting, um, but looking forward to, to working with you all in the future. So if you need anything, um, legal wise, you can ask questions and things like that and I'll do my best to answer them or direct you to staff that can answer them. So pleasure to meet you all.
Pleasure to meet you as well, Mr. Toski. And I imagine you probably have your jammy pants on since you're in Lino Lakes and you gotta get up in the morning and potentially come into work. So, uh, thank you for hanging out with us tonight.
Yep. No problem. It's a good meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Markergard?
Yeah, so looking forward to our next, uh, two meetings, uh, January 13th, one week from tonight. We have three items, uh, left on the agenda, however, one will be requesting a continuance. So effectively two items for discussion. One is, uh, a new instructional center on Gerard Avenue, 96th and Gerard. And the other is a new cultural campus at 1701 American Boulevard. Uh, both are conditional use permits. And then the request for continuance would be from the residential application at 8200 Humboldt. Uh, they're requesting a two-week continuance to the 27th. So on the 27th, uh, presuming that item would be continued, uh, that, uh, 149 unit, uh, residential building at 8200 Humboldt would be on that agenda, along with the Seagate Technology Expansion, 80,000 square foot expansion. And then we have two study items tentatively on that agenda, uh, discussion of hotel and office conversions, and then a discussion of, uh, the South Loop District, uh, some updates there and a discussion of the potential, uh, 2027 Expo, uh, also known, uh, previously as the World's Fair. So that's what we have on the next two agendas.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Markergard. And, uh, regarding January 13th, just to let, uh, Mr. Roman know, I will be in attendance. They, uh, my trip to Washington DC has been canceled due to COVID, so, um...
So much for the per diem I was going to collect coming in.
All right, you might've gotten a second spatula. All right, um, any other comments or questions, issues, uh, by commissioners that, uh, they want to, uh, bring up for staff tonight? I didn't think so since it's 9:35 at night. So thank you all, planning commission members, and thank you all to the public who, uh, watched tonight. And with that, that concludes our January 6th, 2022 planning commission meeting. Thank you.[1771.33]